Okay, time to get this show on the road. We'll go ahead and call to order this meeting of the Salem Housing Authority. Today's February 9th, times the skosh after 6:30. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Anderson?
Present.
Commissioner Bennett?
Here.
Commissioner McCoy?
Here.
Commissioner Dickey?
Here.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Here.
Commissioner Benardts?
Here.
Commissioner Lewis?
Here.
Chair Nanki?
Here.
If you will join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. That always sounds so nice with a full house. Public comment, have we any? No? Is there anyone who would care to speak to the Housing Authority? We have three meetings tonight, Housing Authority, Urban Renewal Agency, and Salem City Council meeting. So if you want to speak at one of those others, don't think this is your only chance to speak to the Housing Authority. With that, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Sooner.
Mr. Wilk, any comments on the content of the program management reports or any other of the topics this evening?
I do not have any comments.
Excellent. It was a good read. I really enjoyed the article on the homeless count. Do we know when we'll actually have final numbers that will go to HUD, Ed?
It tends to change each year depending upon the number of volunteers and the cohesiveness of the data. I believe that this year, the process went fairly well. I would think it would be within 30 days and then take some time locally to kind of evaluate it and then get that on to HUD, probably within 90 days.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carries unanimously. There are no other items on the agenda that require action, so with that, we will adjourn this meeting of the Salem Housing Authority. Just that quick, just that easy. The other meetings will go rapidly, I'm sure. Berna?
All right, I'd like to welcome everyone this evening to the meetings for the City of Salem Urban Renewal District, Urban Renewal Agency, and also for the Salem City Council. We'll open with the Urban Renewal Agency meeting for February 9, 2015. Would the recorder please call the roll?
Board Member Bennett?
Here.
Board Member Anderson?
Present.
Board Member Nanki?
Here.
Board Member McCoy?
Here.
Board Member Dickey?
Here.
Board Member Benjamin?
Here.
Board Member Benardts?
Here.
Board Member Lewis?
Here.
Chair Peterson?
Here. And Member Nanki, would you please introduce the additions to the agenda?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would move additions, deletions, and revisions as contained in the packet on your desktops this evening.
It's been moved by Member Benardts, by Member Nanki, and seconded by Member Benardts to approve the additions and additions to the agency agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. I don't believe we have any reports this evening from boards, commissions, or committees, but I do see that we have people signed up for public comment. And I'll call a couple of names at a time, Kate Tarter and Karina Lee. And you have three minutes. Welcome.
Thank you. Are we still doing addresses? Awards, Ward 5.
You're right.
Okay, so, and you have my name, it's already been announced. So thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Councilors, for allowing me to speak on this topic tonight. I want you to know that I'm not opposed to the project itself of the storm drain. What I'm opposed to is the funding that could potentially become out of the urban renewal. Public Works obviously does benefit from having urban business in urban renewal. And when I looked up how much Public Works received, when SOMCO was in town, it was close to $4 million. Unfortunately, there were no taxes that went to the urban renewal. So I sent a letter yesterday, so I'll make this brief. My main point is that I'm advocating to see that if urban renewal funds are used for this project, that they be paid back. This urban renewal is running out of time, and SOMCO was the reason we were given that the second phase of Portland Road was turned down the first time. So I'm just concerned that the tax dollars be used for the urban renewal in urban renewal projects. I realize this storm drain has been done before, but there's also funding for Public Works projects. And like I said in my letter, Public Works seemed to have more revenue out of SOMCO than the urban renewal did. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Ms. Tarter? All right, thank you very much. Karina Lee, followed by Brent Nielsen. Welcome.
Good evening, I'm Karina Lee. I'm the Executive Director of the Salem Kaiser Education Foundation, and I am pleased to have the opportunity to speak to you tonight about item number 4.3B. In March of 2014, SKEF purchased the Starkey McCully Building with a vision to preserve and renovate the building to accommodate a regional college and career center to be named the Mike McLaren Center for Success. The building will also house SKEF administrative offices, tutoring classrooms, retail and workforce training programs. The Salem Kaiser Education Foundation currently rents space in the adjacent building immediately north to the Starkey McCully Building, where our administrative offices are and where the sidewalk begins operates. Relocating these uses into the Starkey McCully Building, where they administer our Bazillion Books for Kids program, will create an operating efficiency and increased ability to deliver a variety of services. The proposed improvements to the Starkey McCully Building include a new roof, installation of an elevator, HVAC system, plumbing, electrical, windows, the storefront restoration, and most importantly and most visible, will be opening the windows that had been cinder blocked in on the second floor, making that second-story space vital and usable. The project aligns with the capital improvement grant program objectives. First and foremost, preservation. The Starkey McCully Building is a contributing building to the downtown community and is on the Federal Registry of Historic Places. Job creation. Upon completion, we estimate a minimum of 12 and possibly up to 16 full-time jobs immediately upon our opening. We will retain existing businesses in the downtown core. SKEF will stay there, where the sidewalk begins will stay there, Bazillion Books and our administrative offices. And this project has recruited new tenants. Western Oregon University will have two full-time college admissions specialists there, and we will bring Oregon College Savings Plan, and as I mentioned, the upper-floor renovations. We are here tonight to request a waiver from a guideline for the use of the toolbox dollars. A guideline has stated in the past that those dollars may not be accessed without a specific waiver because of a nonprofit status, and we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. This is not a precedent-setting request. A waiver had been acknowledged to the historic Elsinore Theater, not once, but twice, for $280,000. We did receive unanimous consent and adoption by the Downtown Advisory Board two weeks ago when we presented this information to them. And I believe you have letters from Brian Moore, who was at that meeting as well. I see my red lights going, I will mind my manners.
No, your time is up.
Oh, that was the amber light.
That was the amber light.
I also have with me some brochures. I did not bring our video that we have on the building, but essential to this component is we'll be raising about $2.5 million to revitalize that building that has been blighted and stood empty for many, many years and bring university presence and families downtown.
Okay, now your time is up.
Okay.
It's all right. Does anyone have questions for Ms. Lee? Yes, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ma'am, one of the, thanks for coming down tonight. One of the items in your proposal was a one-time payment in lieu of real estate taxes for the calendar year 2015, I think, or is it 2016?
2015, 16.
16, okay. And that figure was $5,000, and from where did you get that figure?
I got that from the Marion County Assessors Office, and what that was valued at before it became on the nonprofit rolls.
All right, thank you very much.
Were there any other questions for Ms. Lee? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Brent Nielsen, followed by Jason Cox. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, is that? So I'm Brent Nielsen, Ward 7. I apologize, I had to look that up, but now I know. So I'm the President of the Board for Salem Kaiser Education Foundation. Really, I, you know, Karina's providing all the details. What I want to talk about is I want to thank all the staff folks for the Downtown Advisory Board. You know, the process of consideration of this discussion has been very well done, and I guess I want to emphasize that this sort of exemption is, it's really, it's a procedural thing. It's not something that's precedent-setting that we should be scared of. It's holding something up and saying, okay, are the benefits enough stronger than what we would lose that it makes sense? You know, I, without any pause, say absolutely. As far as getting back to the precedent-setting, another thing that I would like to offer is that if that's a concern, I think what we're looking at has set the bar high. It's not something where it has said, now everyone is going to come in and apply for this. You know, we have gone through and said, you know, we're hitting seven, eight of the standards, we're doing this, we're doing that. If anything, it would make it more difficult for an organization to come in and apply. So, you know, I don't have a lot to offer. I guess thank you for the consideration, and, you know, hopefully this is seen as just being a simple process.
Thank you very much. Are there questions? Yes, it looks like Member McCoy has a question.
Thank you. Question for you would be, you're asking for a lot of money here. For, so when you say you're worried about setting precedents, the fact could be made, and I ask you to respond to this, the fact that you received $280,000 or $300,000 that you're requesting for this grant as an exception, couldn't it be said that, well, then what are we supposed to do when somebody comes up with a $25,000 request for the same kind of an issue? Not as much money. This is one of the bigger grants that would be ever, I think, one of the larger grants would be approved, period. It's a maximum. So I guess my point is, the exception, the first time, is the maximum, and how, we're already at the top, and you're saying, well, that sets the bar. Well, the bar's set pretty, I just, I guess I have a problem with your statement, so...
So do you want me to respond?
Sure.
Okay. So first off, this is not the first time. As was stated before, the historic Elsinore Theater received two exceptions. In the way that the rules are set up, it's defined the amount based on the size of the project. So it's, with the size of our project, that we're doing a $2.5 million project puts it into the pool that would qualify for that sort of grant. You know, I guess I'm not going to argue one way or another whether it's precedent-setting, whether it will cause someone to come in and say, you know, just give us the money. Honestly, I think if someone did that, and they looked at this, they would have cause for concern, because they would not be able to show the justification. They would not be able to show that they're meeting all of these different, that they're bringing jobs downtown, they're keeping businesses, they're bringing more businesses downtown. They're, you know, they're, I guess that's what I would offer in way of response.
Yes.
Follow-up, so, how many, you say, and I had a little confusion here, you say that's bringing 24 jobs, or is it keeping 24 jobs downtown? Because you're, aren't you already located downtown next door?
We're already located downtown. This will create 12 to 16 new jobs immediately. Then what we don't know is, as we have partners that are locating downtown also, we don't know what, you know, we can't figure those numbers, but there will likely be additional impact there as well.
Okay, are there other questions? Yes, Member Benardts?
Brent, thank you for coming down here tonight. Ed, a question. The grant size is based on the overall project. The project is in the neighborhood of, what is it, 2.1, 2.3?
2.5 million.
2.5 million. So the grant that you're looking for, the exemption amount, is in the neighborhood of...
It's $300,000.
$300,000. It could be less. Out of those figures, you're 2.5 fixed at this point, you've got bids.
You mean the size of our project?
Yes.
Yeah, it's 2.5 is, you know, that's, you know, I'm on the capital campaign that's raising that money, so if you want to have someone come in and say, we have to raise less, bless you.
Well, I just appreciate the amount of money that was invested earlier this year in downtown on another building, Auburn State and Liberty. To see something like this, another several million dollars going into the older buildings rehabilitated.
It's exciting.
It's exciting to see that you've taken the risks and sticking your own neck out to get the money.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Other questions by counselors? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next person is Jason Cox.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Councilors. My name is Jason Cox. I live in Ward 5. I'm also Chairman of the North Gateway Redevelopment Advisory Board, but I speak here tonight from my cellphone. I'm here tonight regarding Agenda Item 4.3C to ask you to keep sight of the consensus goal established by this agency board of revitalizing and reshaping Salem's Northern Gateway. If you decide to move forward with this stormwater project, I ask you to make North Salem whole by paying back the money you spend out of urban renewal with Public Works dollars. Our Board sees the value in this project, which is why we unanimously recommended finding funding to do so in city accounts. The record shows the city has known about this problem for many years and has had ample opportunities to include it in Public Works budgets. A loan from urban renewal to Public Works repaid over a period of time would soften the blow to the Public Works budget without compromising the possibilities along the Portland Road corridor. I would add that our advisory board has shown significant flexibility in considering projects off of Portland Road. Just last week, our Board voted unanimously to recommend a budget transfer that will enable an additional $100,000 grant for this same property. After our board meeting last week, I spoke with a small business owner on Portland Road who wants to expand into a vacant storefront and remodel another business his family owns nearby. He told me he put off the idea for years because he didn't think he could recoup the investment. Little by little, and in large part due to the hard work and persistence of the city's community services departments, streets, Public Works, and police working hand-in-hand with neighbors, North Gate has improved to the point that he's willing to take a risk. This is great news. I let him know about the Portland Road Strategic Action Plan and the upcoming open houses, I believe on March 4th and 12th. He shares my enthusiasm that the city is making active strides towards fulfilling the promise made to North Salem residents and businesses 25 years ago. This compromise keeps the Portland Road promise intact by maintaining the financial capability to make Salem's Northern Gateway the best it can be. This compromise gives us a better shot at a vibrant front door to our community, one with curb appeal, one that works for walkers, bikers, and drivers, one that is economically viable, safe, and functional for those of us who call North Salem home. I would add that it is also one heck of a potential legacy for this body. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Are there questions of Mr. Cox? All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience this evening that would like to appear and testify at this point in this session and had not been able to sign up? This is just for the Urban Renewal Agency. Okay, seeing no one else, thank you. We'll move on in our agenda. I don't see any reports of boards, commissions, and committees this evening. We'll move to the consent calendar. Member Nanki, do you have a motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would move the consent calendar with the following polls, 4.3B and 4.3D by Member Anderson.
Second.
It's been moved by Member Nanki and seconded by Member Benardts to move the consent calendar with the following polls, item 4.3B by Member Anderson and 4.3D by Member Anderson. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we have information reports. Are there any questions about information reports that are in our packet? Okay, then special orders of business, we'll move to those items polled from the consent calendar. And Member Anderson, I'll ask you, do you have a motion for item 4.3B?
Yes, I do. I move, normally I don't need these.
CCTV just has an issue with it.
I move option 1 with the following, I'll let the city attorney advise me to the right language, with the following addition. I approve the exemption with the condition that they may apply for the grant conditioned on a binding agreement for SKEF to pay the real property taxes as if they were a nonprofit organization.
Second.
All right.
If they were a for-profit organization.
As if they were for-profit.
Yes.
All right.
Or not a nonprofit, if we want to get double negatives.
It's been moved by Member Anderson and seconded by Member Benardts to approve the recommended action with the additional word of that the Salem Kaiser Education Foundation would agree to, would sign a binding agreement to pay property taxes as though the property were on the tax rolls for a for-profit business. City Attorney, does that match with our guidelines? For motion language?
Yes.
Okay.
My only question would be, how long would that requirement to pay the property taxes last?
This is an outright grant, so there's no, it's no loan, no back payment, no abatement, as long as they own the property.
Okay, is there further discussion? Would you care to further discuss?
Yes, I first want to say I echo Counselor Benardts's comments about how wonderful it is to see people downtown and buildings downtown and how the grant program works wonderfully. I understand that there, a prior council has allowed the Elsinore, which is a nonprofit, to also do this, but I really don't believe that we should open this can of worms any farther than we've already gone, because any nonprofit will now come in, whether they meet the requirements or not, we're going to have to be there again facing this issue time and time again. I note that the property taxes are $5,000 a year, which in comparison to a $2.6 million project, which the grant would be $300,000, that's not an onerous condition.
60 years.
Yeah.
60 years.
To place on it in terms of that amount, so I think this way we would overcome any concerns about a precedent, and we would also allow this development to go forward with the toolbox grant of $300,000.
Okay, I have several hands up. I have to ask a clarifying question. The $5,000 that you are referring to, is that based on the value of the building today, or was, or are you saying that the property taxes would be as if levied once the building is renovated and...
I'm saying as levied.
I'm sorry?
I'm saying as levied.
As levied today?
Yeah, whatever happens.
Or as levied down the road when the building is restored and improved?
Down the road, too.
Okay, so whatever that year's current...
Yes.
...assessment would be?
Yes, yeah.
I see, okay, all right. There were three other hands, I believe. Counselor Bennett, your hand was up.
Yes, Madam Mayor. The, I guess the concern I have with the motion, I assume the precedent then that's being set is we will start asking all urban renewal area nonprofits, including churches and others then, to start paying in lieu of taxes, because that's really the precedent being set here. This isn't, this doesn't deal with an increment, which is generally what we would talk about from that $5,000 as it incrementally increases in value, but this really sets, I think, a really, not a, it's not like dangerous or anything if you believe in taxing churches and other nonprofits, but I think that's the slippery slope this takes us down. The amount of money involved here is certainly important. The amount of money being invested is very large, in this case, a substantial fundraising activity. I hope you all had a chance to look at the brochure you received. This is a tremendous service to this community and to its young people. The upgrading of this building, the ongoing work of the Salem Kaiser Education Foundation, and I think the improvement of this building ultimately is an addition to downtown, just by bringing it up to some standard. This is a building in very rough condition, and the tremendous investment they're making for the small, compared to $2.5 million sum of $300,000, I think is the kind of way we leverage the kind of improvements we're talking about. It sounds like some sort of fiscally responsible decision, but to follow its logic is to take you someplace that I think we ought to spend a great deal more time discussing, which is the taxing of nonprofits, or in lieu of, payments for nonprofits, just a separate issue. So, I don't know, I guess with that in mind, I would move the staff recommendation as a substitute motion.
There isn't one. There's an option 1 or 2.
Option 2.
Option 1. I'll move option 1. No condition.
All right, I have a point of order.
Is it a substitution motion?
Sure.
Yeah.
If you were going to do it.
Go ahead and say.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to amend.
Second.
No, it's to return to the original motion. Is that your motion, Member Bennett?
Mine is to go to option 1. The counselor had added a condition. I just go to the clean option 1 as it's stated in the staff report.
Is there a second to that?
Counselor Benardts.
All right, it's been moved by Member Bennett and seconded by Member Benardts to accept the motion with option 1, as in the staff report. All right? Is there any further discussion? All right, let's see. Hands up. I'm going to start with Member Benardts, and then go to Anderson, and then Nanki, and then McCoy.
I appreciate that, since I didn't have, I had my hand up earlier as well.
I know you did.
So I don't know, is this the time that I could ask staff a question or two on this whole thing? So is this, the vacancy, this grant, is this part of the vacancy toolbox that we've so well been talked about?
Actually, Counselor, it is not. I should say, Rick Scott, Urban Development Interim Director. It's not, it's, is the new program, the capital improvements program that was adopted, I believe, last year by the agency board. So it is a new program, really designed to bring about renovation, major renovation of buildings, and also new buildings to the downtown area.
Okay, and so, Ed, do we have a monetary amount of what this is likely to bring to our downtown, either from parking fees or other business? Anything, any idea at all?
I'm sorry, Counselor, but we've not done that, I guess I would call it, soft revenue analysis.
So the next question I wanted to ask had to do with URA on reference to this capital improvement program. How much money has been allocated overall? How much, if this $300,000 is then spent on this particular project, what's remaining in downtown, in that budget for downtown?
That's a very good question. I think what I'll do is have Shree Wargren come up, and I know we have that specific number, so we can give that to you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Shree Wargren, Downtown Revitalization Manager. Your question is, how much money do we have in the grant program?
Well, how much was in the CIP, and how much is going to be remaining basically after the $300,000 is pulled out? Will anybody else be able to do anything for a while until the next fiscal...
Yes, we have over a million dollars in our grant budget, and to date, we've had... And to date, we've had three different projects utilize the capital grant program. And again, the agency board's approval of that have been significant in the, um, size of the projects that we've been able to do. One of them was Healing Hands in Liberty Plaza. That has been vacant for over 10 years and they are in 6,000 square feet. They've used the capital grant program. The Kitchen on Court Street, which as you know, used to be Casey's. That was purchased, completely re-gutted and redone. They used the new capital grant program. And, um, the Roth McGillcrest Building used the capital grant program. And the former location where Clockworks was, is the most recent one. And that's again 6,900 square feet that's been sitting there vacant for a long time. So, the, in, the intent of the program to generate larger projects leveraging the dollars so far has been very successful. So, we would certainly have money in our budget if they receive the maximum funding of $300,000.
Okay, thank you. So, I, from my mind is, does it create jobs? Is the intent behind it being fulfilled of helping revitalize downtown, investing in downtown and, and bringing some of the buildings that have been underutilized? And what I'm hearing is clearly the answer to that is yes. Not only in general of the other projects, but this project in specific. Uh, and, you know, I think, I think it's well stated in the, in the staff report. I think this is an, an item by item. I think we need to look at every exemption, every time a nonprofit comes through, and not carte blanche. But, but every time one comes through and take a look at each and every one, does it produce the jobs? Does it produce the revitalization that we want? And for that reason, I would support the substitute motion.
All right, member Anderson?
Thank you. The, um, I mean, I first want to state, as I said before, I'm all in favor of this project and what it does for downtown. But I think the, uh, statement that if you vote on this, you're, uh, if you're in favor of the tax issue, you're then in favor of taxing churches and nonprofits and that puts you on a slippery slope. That's a false premise. What, the, the issue here is you, uh, uh, using the premises done, you should say you would be in favor of taxing churches and nonprofits only if they won a capital improvement grant. That's the issue here. It's not, uh, we're gonna tax churches or other nonprofits. We're only gonna tax them if they in fact say, "We want to take some other money that the city has and they can make available to us and then we start not paying taxes." So, that's where you look at it, not the broad boogeyman specter of, of taxing churches and other nonprofits.
Thank you, and member Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can staff speak to the, uh, the Elsinore situation and what the particulars were and matching dollars by chance?
Again, I think-
It's been pushing it a long time ago as well. It is. It was a completely different program as well at that time. And, uh, so the specifics, I did have Shree take a look at those. And so, I'll have her come back up and she can share what she knows about that particular, uh, project.
It's my understanding, based on looking at the files, because the first project appeared to have been marquee. $200,000 to put a new marquee up in front of the theater. And the second project was part of their complete renovation of all their systems, their roof. They did a large capital campaign and $80,000 went into the roof and system upgrades as part of that entire project that they were doing.
Do we know what the total, uh, cost of the improvement to the Elsinore actually was?
It was three and a half million dollars. Because I was the president of the board when-
Right, I figured somebody would know the answer to that. Having come down and visited it.
Having gone down there, thank you. Let's see, make sure I finished over here. Member McCoy and then member Dickey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, maybe the staff can, uh, answer this question. Why, in fact, in the guidelines then, um, for these grants, are nonprofits supposedly prohibited from getting these grants? What's the logic for putting that in the, in the plan and the, in the rules in the first place?
Counselor, I, I believe that the, uh, intent is to invest in projects that would generate additional tax increment that would allow for additional reinvestment in new programs. So, that's the reason.
Okay.
Okay.
And in this ca-
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
And in this case, that won't occur?
In this particular case, uh, if option one is approved, that would not occur.
Thank you.
Uh, member Dickey and then, uh, member Bennett.
I'm wondering, Mayor, if you or staff could, um, remember exactly when the Elsinore project was done, when those grants were made? What year?
Well, it would have been in the early 2000s. I think it was 2000 and 2001, some, somewhere around in there. I don't remember exactly. I know that the, the new program with the current guidelines came to this council just recently. So, that was, you know, more than 10 years ago that those projects were undertaken. I guess I shouldn't be speaking for staff. I apologize.
Doesn't look like staff has that information.
That's okay, Madam Mayor. You're, you're doing a terrific job.
It's okay. Uh, let's see, where were we? Member Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, just to explore this kind of boogeyman of property taxes just a little bit more, because I think it's really misunderstood what's going on here in, in option one as proposed with, uh, conditions and option one as written. If, uh, if we collected, uh, payments in lieu of property tax based on property value, my understanding, that would go into the city's general fund coffers because it's a straight in lieu of property tax. And I'm not sure how we would deal with the question of increment. I mean, that, this doesn't make sense to me exactly how that would even work. But I'm concerned that, uh, we're really kind of wandering into sort of an odd taxing situation in lieu with, uh, with anyone else. I just suggest to you, this, this is perfectly appropriate. We've done it before. It works very well to improve these very dilapidated, in this case, a really seriously, uh, uh, a, a building downtown in serious need of approval. I'd urge you to, uh, approve this substitute motion. And if we're gonna return to the alternative, I think we better take a very, very close look at what we're talking about in terms of in lieu payments, their impact, both as a precedent, but also really who gets the money and how, how the whole thing works. Because this gets a little arcane when you start messing around in urban renewal and tax increments.
All right. Member Anderson?
Perhaps the city attorney could address that issue in terms of where the tax would go, to the general fund or to the, the urban renewal district downtown?
Assuming the, the grant rewarded conditional upon them paying an in lieu fee or something for, for property taxes, we would work with the assessor to determine what the assessed amount would be and who, whether the money would go straight to the county and they would be dispersed through the assessor or whether would, the, the grantee would be required to make separate payments to all the taxing districts. It's not something we've done before, but we had to talk with the assessor to determine how we could administer that.
What about the general fund question versus the urban renewal district?
Well, typically when a property is within an urban renewal area, the, the money gets sent to the, the county, the entire tax bill. And then the, the assessor doles out money to the city, the county and the different taxing districts. Hypothetically, this would work the same way.
Uh, member Benars?
This may be a question for Rick's. Rick, any idea what that building is currently paying today in property taxes?
Again, I, I believe it's, it's somewhere in that neighborhood of the, uh, $5,000. And when you say today, I want to be clear. I think the building has been purchased by the foundation.
By the foundation? So, it's a 501(c)(3) and at some point-
So, if your point is, what are they actually paying today? Or what, will they pay in the next tax year? It would be, uh, nothing.
Zero.
That's correct.
And if, and if we do this loan and the tax increment and all of a sudden that building's worth, instead of whatever it is now, it's worth another two and a half million dollars, presuming that you get dollar, dollar for dollar investment, we're still getting nothing.
That's correct.
But we are getting a revitalized building downtown. We are getting an additional jobs. We're getting additional parking revenue presumably and so forth.
I think in the staff report, you mentioned the criteria. They do meet three of the six criteria in the guidelines.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to speak to the motion. And I'd like us to go back in our minds to just a, a year or two ago when the downtown advisory board was looking at ways to further incent private sector investment in the downtown. And we knew that it was more difficult at the time for loans to be made. And I remember discussion even with this council that the grant program is a, is a particularly important program because it does leverage those private sector dollars. And I know very clearly that our intent has been all along to increase the value, the value of the properties in the riverfront downtown urban renewal area. That is our number one goal. Increase in jobs, increase in vitality, increase in the other factors that have been mentioned are all worthy attributes. But our number one goal has been increasing the value of the property in the district. And so, I won't be supporting the motion because I believe very strongly, we worked very hard on this within just the last couple of years. And I don't see a reason to suddenly change our thinking now. Yes, it is a worthwhile project. There isn't anyone that could argue with that. But I do think we have to remember what our duty as this urban renewal agency is. And that is number one, increasing the value of the property in our downtown. Member Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And as interim director Scott mentioned, this is a new program. It's not the old program that had a, uh, an occurrence of a transfer of funds to a nonprofit. And this is less than a year old. We have four new councillors. So, I would suggest that if this motion actually passes that we readdress the program because we will be confronted with numerous, uh, occurrences where other nonprofits will want to utilize grant funds. And, and that's typically not what an urban renewal area does to improve its increment. So, I, I will be, uh, in opposition to the current motion on the floor as well.
Thank you. Yes, member Lewis?
Yeah, if I understand, this substitute motion is option A and, um... I'm recalling my time on the downtown advisory board and one of the things that was pounded over and over and over again was the idea of bringing value, tax dollars. That's the purpose of an urban renewal district, is bring value, tax dollars. So, those tax dollars can then be reinvested and, and help the community. And, um, and this is, I remember my Catholic school days. This isn't a venial sin, this is a mortal sin. But I've been rereading the letter from Brian Moore and, and he was one of the, he was one of the teachers of that, of that, uh, of that lesson. And, um, and I think he points out well that, that sometimes, sometimes you, you sin to accomplish your goal. And, um, Salem's in a need, it's downtown especially, is in a need of activity and, and growth. And I believe that, um, the Salem Kaiser School Foundation, uh, does that. They accomplish things. And so, I believe that, uh, they will follow through and, and accomplish what, what they say they're gonna do. And so, we will, we will have the results. And so, it is, uh, it is not easy. But, um, but I, I, I'm going to go against what that, what, what that creed is and not ever to, to allow nonprofits to take advantage of things like this. Now, with that said, um, I for one, as long as I'm sitting in this chair, the next time somebody just tries to do that, it's easy to say no. It's really easy to say no. I'd like to say no tonight. But I just think that this is something that, at this particular point in time, Salem needs. So, I will vote for this motion.
All right, is there further discussion? Councillor Nanki?
Yeah, just one other point in, in far as difference between a for-profit and nonprofit. It's very difficult for a for-profit company to get stuff to renovate their buildings. Whereas as a nonprofit, especially one as renowned as, as this one, will be donations from, uh, other members of the community and what have you that's not available on the, on the private sector side. So, that being said as well, it, it's a significant difference in funding opportunities, um, for this type of a, a project as well.
Member Anderson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In addition to what councillor Nanki says, as a 501(c)(3) corporation, any deductions or any, any contributions made are gonna be tax deductible. So, you know, we're, they're already where they are. And if we say we're going to ask them to have taxes, that's a, that's a minor amount. And anybody, and if they get contributions for that, those are tax deductible for the persons who give them.
Member Dickey?
Thank you, Mayor. I, you know, I'm just on the other side of councillor Lewis in that, you know, I want to say yes to this because I think this is a very, very worthwhile project. However, I'm very concerned about setting a precedent. It has only been a year, maybe a little less than a year, that we had a very lengthy discussion on this floor about whether we allow nonprofits to be eligible for these grant funds and a list of reasons why that could be problematic for us and how that may not be achieving our goals of, um, the reinvestment that we're looking for in private business downtown. So, um, for that reason, I won't be supporting the motion. However, I strongly support, um, the Salem Kaiser Education Foundation and all the programs they have. And I'm very excited about the project that they do have going.
Is there any further discussion? It's time to call for the motion, call for the question. All right, before I do that, I need to declare that I have had an expartee contact, uh, which is thoroughly allowed as long as I discuss that. And I was visited the other day in my office by Kreena Lee and Brent Nielsen and Dick Witnow to discuss this project. Okay, we can now, uh, call for the, the question. All those in favor of the motion, which is, excuse me, councillor Bednarz?
You're asking the question I was, are we voting the substitute motion at this point?
We are on the substitute motion as I understand.
Which, option one. Thank you.
Option one. All right, thank you for the, asking for the clarification. All right, all those in favor of the motion of option one, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, excuse me, no.
All right. All those voting-
I was being mental here for a second.
All right. And all those voting opposed, signify by saying aye. Aye. All right, uh, please indicate with your hand if you're voting no so we can get the names recorded for the recorder. Okay, Anderson, uh, Nanki, McCoy, Benjamin, Dickey and Peterson voted no. Motion fails. Thank you very much. Okay, our next item is-
Point of order.
Oh, excuse me.
The motion was a substitute motion, so that's subsumed the first motion. So, if you want to make another motion to consider this item, you can. But the first motion is dead.
Okay, um, I renew my motion, um, that I made earlier with the, concerning the real estate taxes.
Okay, would you like to state the motion? Just so we're very clear. I, I would like to be sure we have clarity as to the type of the taxes that you're talking about.
I move that we allow the Salem Kaiser Education Foundation to apply for a capital improvement grant as long as this application, if approved, will be subject to a binding agreement for Salem Kaiser Education Foundation to pay the real property taxes on this building as if they were a for-profit organization.
All right, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
It's been moved by member Anderson and seconded by member Lewis to approve the staff recommendation with the exception, or, I'm sorry, with the condition that the recipient would pay real property taxes as though this property were owned by a for-profit business. Is that correct wording? Okay, all right. And is there discussion on that motion?
Just a brief one because we discussed it. The discussion in opposition or for the other motion was about this, this issue as well. This doesn't mean that we're going to tax them. It just means that if they want to apply for the grant- apply for the grant, then that will be part of the condition. So I guess that's the only other explanation I have.
All right. Member Lewis.
Yes, I'm going to hope that the Salem Kaiser Education Foundation does not lose the desire that they have. You know, they have an interest in doing something that is really good for Salem. This is going to, and it's a two and a half million dollar project, and this will add to the expenses of that. It doesn't take away the quality or the need, but it does add to the expense. I hope they recognize that Salem's worth it.
Yes, Member Bennett.
Madam Mayor, I wondered if the city attorney could help me. I'd like to set this one for, I don't think we understand what this means yet. I really don't. In terms of taxes going to the county, I'd like to know how many sheriff's officers I'm buying with this tax, how much is going into our coffers, how much goes into the Salem Kaiser School coffers. Under this kind of a proposal, I'd like to have a staff report that explains this concept because right now I think we're operating in the blind. You know, and I may be right, and I may, and potentially it's just a boogeyman. I can promise you right now, I'm closer to right than throwing up a boogeyman at this point. So I'd ask that we, what the motion would look like to move this to another agenda, future agenda with a staff report explaining how the taxes would be collected, distributed, what the mechanism is here. This is quite unusual to do this, and I think we ought to understand it.
There would be a substitute motion, and you're more than welcome to say, I so move.
I so move what? What am I moving?
To ask staff to come back with a report to explain the mechanics of how this would work.
Okay, Madam Mayor, make a substitute motion to postpone action on this item to the next urban renewal agency meeting. And I'm not sure when it is, so. Date certain on the next urban meeting.
And to ask staff to come back with a report.
And to ask staff to come back with a report explaining the mechanism here and how the taxes are both collected, distributed, what the impact is on the city in terms of tax revenues of this kind of motion.
It's been moved and seconded to ask staff to return with a report as described by Councilor Bennett and our city attorney. And I see a couple of hands up. I think Member Lewis followed by Member Nanki.
Yeah, I don't know if procedurally, we are stuck now, but I think we are fixated on the word tax unnecessarily. If I understand the motion correctly, there's to be an agreement between the City of Salem and the Salem Kaiser Education Foundation about a fee to be paid in lieu of taxes. I don't think that there's really a necessity to evaluate a tax system special to this I understand the motion that we would like the Salem Kaiser Education Foundation to pay a fee to the urban renewal area similar to, if not exactly the same, that they would be paying if they were paying the tax. But I don't think it's necessary to figure out the tax and send some to the police department, the fire department, and this urban renewal area in that district. And I think an agreement between the parties could suffice, and I don't know if we really need the motion that's on the table now.
All right, let's see, Member Nanki, and then Member McCoyd, and then back to Member Bennett.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And the newest motion on the floor somewhat complicates things depending on if it's the will of the Urban Renewal Agency to even move forward on this, because now staffs can actually go do a bunch of research without knowing that we would even want to get into where we're taxing or equivalent taxing a nonprofit for property taxes, which in my opinion is starting to get off on the fringe of reality. Although it's an interesting concept, I can't see it moving forward and actually being a precedent of its own that we just start taxing nonprofits if they want to gain privileges of grantship and what have you. So I won't support this one either.
Member McCoyd followed by Member Bennett.
I won't be supporting this motion either. I think the first vote indicates the will of the council in general, and this is just kicking the can down the road so we can revisit this later. I think that, I think the decision's been made, and we're just trying to prolong this thing for other reasons.
Thank you. Member Bennett?
I sure don't mean to be prolonging this for any reason, though. The problem is, and I certainly understand Councilor Nanki's point of view, but the motion is payment in lieu of taxes. You can call it all kinds of other stuff. And I think that Councilor Lewis pointed out real clearly, there's ways, alternative ways to describe this fee that simplify it, but that's not the motion. That is not the motion you're going to be voting on if you reject this. I think we need to just get it clarified. I don't think it's some sort of multiple hour study. I think we just need to understand what it is we're talking about in terms of a payment in lieu of taxes, how it would be applied, what the sideboards might look like to make it make sense in this case. Because right now, this could be almost anything. This is one of those, we'll have somebody else figure it out for us at some point. And I'd just like to understand where we're headed on this, and I'm surprised that councilors wouldn't want to understand when you're taking this radical an action relative to nonprofits, sort of, what are you doing here? I mean, it could be, it's just a fabulous idea, but I think we ought to understand it before we vote on it.
Just a moment. All right, thank you. Member Nanki followed by Member Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It sounds like the maker of the substitute motion is afraid of a potential outcome of the primary motion that would be on the table, and I would really like to make a different motion on top of the table, but the rules of meeting preclude me from being able to throw out a second substitute. So I'll let that sit out there and see if anything comes from it.
All right, Member Anderson.
Well, that's not fair. I mean, what if, what might the substitute motion be? You don't have to say the motion, but-
There's only two.
Well, you know, I'm in the dark as to what your substitute motion might be.
If I may, Madam Mayor?
You may.
That's part of the discussion.
If the current substitute motion were to be rescinded, I would be moving option number two to take its place.
Oh, well, I guess what I would point out is, I'm not necessarily opposed to what Councilor Bennett says. I can't, I'm not sure which way I'm going to vote now on that. But the motion that I made is the only motion that would allow the Salem Kaiser Education Foundation to apply for a grant. As it stands right now, they can't apply for one. So, you know, if we don't pass either Bennett's, Councilor Bennett's motion, or my original motion, this matter is dead as far as the Salem Kaiser School District is concerned, or, excuse me, Salem Kaiser Education Foundation is concerned, they can't come back. We said no.
That's right.
So I'm in favor of them applying for a grant with this condition.
All right, who seconded that motion? Okay.
Probably Warren.
All right. Are we ready for the question, or is there further discussion? Council Benjamin.
I've heard a little bit about this in the past, and the way I look at this is this does revitalize the area, kind of jumpstarts the area, makes it a little nicer. But what I see more directly down the road is that people are going to get the tools to be employed, more employable, and be gainfully employed, and hopefully they'll stay in Salem and buy houses and shop in Salem, maybe even start a business in Salem for what they learn here. So this is more of planting a seed so that down the road, the city will reap benefits from it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Council Dickey.
Thank you. To the motion and substitute motion, which I think we're on, actually, Councilor Nanki, I would second your hypothetical motion if that option were available, but it's not. But to the original motion and the substitute motion, I am really concerned that we would be going down a path of starting to tax nonprofits, and I don't think we should be in the business of that, and I think that's not something that I'm interested in entertaining at this point. But I do understand why, your reasoning, I understand why you made your motion, Councilor Bennett and Councilor Anderson as well. I mean, I understand you're trying to get to an end result, and I appreciate that. I'm just really concerned about just opening up that door of trying to tax nonprofits, and I just, I'm concerned about going there.
All right, thank you. All right, then, I think it looks to me like we're ready for the question. Motion by Member Anderson and seconded, wasn't it?
Councilor Bennett's, or, Member Bennett's motion.
All right, Council Bennett's motion, substitute motion, which was seconded by-
The usual suspect.
By Member Ben Arz, thank you very much. No, I think it was Lewis.
No, I don't.
No, it wasn't? It was Ben Arz, all right, thank you. All right, okay.
Could we have a rereading of the motion?
Yes, all right. Council Bennett, would you like to restate your motion?
Go ahead. I'm going to ask the recorder. Do you have it?
I only got the first portion of it, was to move to postpone the action to the next urban renewal agency meeting and for staff to bring back a report to explain the tax.
The tax or fee implications of the motion, of the main motion, Councilor Anderson's motion.
All right, that's the question before us. All those in favor of the motion? Excuse me. I'm not used to having people vote behind my back, so I thought I'd wait till Member Anderson can go back to his chair. All right, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Nay. Will the nays please raise their hands? Nanki, McCoyd, Dickey, and Peterson. Motion carries. All right, thank you, everyone. Now we will go to the second item that was pulled by Member Anderson, and that's item Member Anderson, do you have a motion to suggest?
I move we accept the staff recommendation, I move the staff recommendation.
It's been moved by Member Anderson and seconded by Member, was it Nanki? I wasn't watching. Thank you, Nanki. And is there discussion? Member Anderson.
Yes, thank you very much. It's mostly a discussion in the way of questions and a few statements. And I've discussed this a little bit with Rick, what's your last name, Rick?
Scott.
Rick Scott, thank you. I knew it was one of those first and last name, same things. I've discussed it with Rick Scott, and here's my question. The motion talks about the agreement, the easement would be on the north side of the creek going toward the river. And if you look at some of the earlier schematics, there's the plan shows a pedestrian walkway or boardwalk on the south side of the river as well, or the creek as well. And, you know, that's, so I'm wondering, and then I also looked at the agreement, and it looks like section 6.4 of the real estate agreement says that the, you know, the city shall get easements to make it to the river over that piece of property without specifying. So I'd just like some staff explanation about why this is on the north side only and not the south when some of the plans show the south.
Councilor Anderson, I think what I'll do is ask Clint Damaron to come up. He was involved directly in the discussions with the property owner regarding the easements, and we do have some detail as it relates to a north-south connection, which is actually, I believe, what your question pertains to. So Clint?
Good evening, Clint Damaron, Urban Development Department, Real Property Services Manager. To answer the question, the original concept did call for what we refer to as the slab, which is the foundation of the old building that went across the creek. That is still currently under study to see if that can be used. We're doing an engineering analysis, hydraulic analysis, to determine if that structure is indeed safe for pedestrian use, and if it's not, what cost would it take to get it up to a safe level for pedestrian crossing. So that is still under study. We don't know the answer to that right now. We should know that within the next four to six weeks and have that information available to you. What the easement as proposed does is get us from Commercial Street Bridge with the improvement already in place underneath the bridge, the new sidewalk, that will allow us to someday in the future connect across the portion of the Boise site, hopefully under the railroad trestle, and then on to, again, hopefully, the new part of Riverfront Park and into the park parcel to, and of course, the existing tip of Riverfront Park itself.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Thank you very much for that explanation. So what it sounds like is that at some point in the future, you might come back, assuming that the engineering studies about the slab, so such and such, that we want more money, you want, you need more money to acquire the easement on the south side of the river?
That is, there's potential for an easement on the south and across the creek itself.
Okay, and you say potential?
Well, if the slab is not-
Let's assume the slab, that it's engineeringly possible to do it, then is, does that become still potential, or has it become a reality, or is it someplace in between?
It's been discussed, the potential for where the money would come from, or what that deal would look like, we just don't know at this point.
And by it's discussed, does it mean it's been discussed between the city and the developer?
City and the property owner.
If I could, I think we're away from the real estate question here, so we could come back to council with an update on the rest of the project. This is, what we have before you now is just this one part of the easement.
Council Ben Arz?
So a real quick question, and this may be part of what we're talking about as well. I'm curious about the railroad. You can go so far, but if you can't get underneath that railroad, the easement doesn't do us a whole lot of good. So I think that should be part of the report.
Yes, this is a multi-step process.
Absolutely.
So we can come back with maybe an update on all of the remaining steps that have to be solved. That what's before you tonight is whether or not you want to require, acquire this easement so that we know we have a walkway on the north side.
Would be wanting to do that before we have the remainder of the information?
Pardon me?
Would we want to do that prior to having the remainder of the information?
Yes, I believe this helps us get to where we need to be with the purchase and sell agreement to have this easement as we go forward.
Thank you.
Okay, so the question on the floor is the staff recommendation. Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. All right, we have, as I mentioned, two information reports are in your packet. We have no unfinished business or public hearings or new business for the urban renewal agency. The agency meeting is adjourned. We're going to take a slight break so people can adjust and move and step around, and then we'll try to get back into session pretty quickly. All right, I'll now call to order this evening's meeting of the Salem City Council for February 9, 2015. With the recorder, please call the roll. Council Bennett?
Here.
Council Anderson?
In the fine tradition, award two present.
Council Nanki? Council Nanki?
Here.
Council McCoyd?
Here.
Council Dickey?
Here.
Council Benjamin?
Here.
Council Ben Arz?
Here.
Council Lewis?
Here.
Mayor Peterson? Here, thank you. Here, thank you. See, member, excuse me, Counselor Ben Arz, Counselor Nanki, do you have a motion for approval of additions and deletions?
I do. I would move additions in relation to your business to the agenda as contained in the three yellow packets contained on your desktops this evening.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Nanki and seconded by Counselor Ben Arz to approve the additions and deletions to the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries, thank you. We have time now for council and city manager comment. Do counselors have comments to share this evening? Counselor Anderson, followed by Counselor Ben Arz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Middle of last week, all these strange white little painting signs were put on my, in front of our house on the sidewalk. And what it is, is the Public Works Department has now moved to our part of the neighborhood just south of Bush's Pasture Park to complete sidewalk renovations on our corner lot, which really needs it. And I've been following that from Gayity Hill down to my house. And I want to commend the Public Works Department for the work they've been doing. It hasn't been subcontracted out, it's been the public works people. And I stop and talk to them as I bike by, and they're uniformly hardworking and polite and cooperative and willing to explain everything. And the, what they've done is, so far, is a terrific job. And so I would ask that Director Fernandez pass that on to the people who are doing that work. And I will really love it as it moves out so the rest of the city gets the benefit of that too. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Counselor Ben Arz?
So at the end of January, I had the opportunity, it was alluded to a little bit earlier this evening, in reference to the homeless count. So my wife and I volunteered and went out to Cascade Gateway, actually met at the JC Center, and then went out to Cascade Gateway. We went behind Home Depot and Lowe's, tromped along the bushes and saw many, many camps. Unfortunately, we didn't find that many homeless people at all. We had in tow food and clothing and water bottles, suggestions, we had paper of locations where they could get help. And we had questionnaires. And truly, the reason that I got involved with this whole thing is I've never been homeless. And I fail to understand the causes of homelessness, and I know that there are so many, and I fail to find source of information that tells me that it's, you know, it's real people, but why? Why is this happening, and what can we do to prevent it or get these people back in their homes? Or a home, or some location. And it may not fit for everybody, but this is my attempt to try and understand, and I really appreciate the time. This was done, I think, in conjunction with some federal requirements and the Community Action Agency. But I really want to thank the individuals, the other individuals that did get out and were able to interview. Yes, we did find one or two people, but that was about it.
Great. Thank you for doing that. It certainly is a serious concern in our community and one that I think we're very fortunate that the faith-based community and so many other nonprofits and social service agencies come together to try to meet those needs. Thanks for doing that. Were there other comments from counselors? Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We've been getting the info flashes now for a few weeks, which are wonderful, and I recommend that everyone get on the distribution for press releases and emergency alerts and what have you. I tried to tell someone how to do that. And so I went to the city's webpage, and it was like, hmm, maybe it's the how do I? And then going down, it's like, heavy guess. And I managed to get there. And having moved through our websites, you know, frequently, I think a citizen would be hard-pressed to be able to find out how to get on those lists. Can we do something to help people out?
We can. Thank you for pointing that out. We'll make sure we do that.
Okay, other counselor comments? Counselor Dickey?
Yes, I have a question too, speaking of news releases that go out. So there was a news release that went out that our police department is going to be conducting a safety campaign for motorists and pedestrians. And I was just wondering, after that happens, would you be able to bring back just information, just the results of that, so we could have that information?
We will. This has to do with the number of pedestrian fatalities and accidents we've had with, you know, the dark time of the year and unfortunately, people being hit by cars. And so the police department is doing a public awareness campaign, both about how to be safer when you're driving, and then if you're a pedestrian, how to do what you can to ensure your safety then. And so we talked about it a little bit before the meeting, and we'll come back at the next council meeting and show council and the community the spots that we've done, and would like your feedback about that, and if there are other things you'd like us to do.
Okay, good, thank you. And city manager, do you have comments?
Nothing else.
Does he?
Except that we have achieved worldwide fame with our owl in Bush Park.
Yes.
We've had news stories from around the world.
From time to time, we're on the map for one thing or another.
Okay, we have a proclamation this evening that has to do with becoming a Purple Heart
City proclamation. I've asked Counselor Benjamin to present this proclamation, and I believe, and I know that there's a gentleman here to receive that, and I'm going to turn this over to Counselor Benjamin. Do you have a microphone, portable microphone?
Right here, right.
Oh, here, I didn't see it. Okay, here we go. Let me get you set up for this. Hi.
Proclamation. Whereas the city of Salem, Oregon, has always supported its military and veteran population, and whereas the Purple Heart is the oldest military decoration in present use that was initially created as a badge of military merit by General George Washington in 1782. And whereas the Purple Heart was first American Service Award or Declaration, Decoration, made available to the common soldier and is specifically awarded to members of United States Armed Forces who have been wounded or paid the ultimate sacrifice in combat with a declared enemy of the United States of America. And whereas the mission of the military order of the Purple Heart is to foster an environment of goodwill among the combat wounded veteran members and their families, promote patriotism, support legislative initiatives, and most importantly, to make sure that we never forget. And whereas the Salem metropolitan area has a large, highly decorated veteran population, including many Purple Heart recipients, and whereas Salem joins Bend, Albany, Medford, and Redmond, Oregon as Purple Heart cities. And whereas Salem appreciates the sacrifice of our Purple Heart recipients made in defending our freedoms and believe it is important that we acknowledge them for their courage and show them the honor and support they have earned. Now therefore, aye, Daniel Benjamin?
Yes, you can.
It says Anna Peterson, so. Mayor of the city of Salem, Oregon, do hereby proclaim the city of Salem a Purple Heart City and encourage the citizens of the city of Salem to show their appreciation for the sacrifice, sacrifices Purple Heart recipients have made in defending our freedoms to acknowledging their courage and to show them the honor and support they have earned. Dated this ninth day of February 2014.
Fifty. Fifty.
I'd like to introduce Jack LaBoxe, Purple Heart recipient, decorated veteran. Thank you for your service.
Thank you very much. I remember the American Legion personally, and I was in Vietnam, I was in Berlin when they built the Berlin Wall. So I've been around a little bit. Thank you very much, and thank you for inviting me down here tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to have you here. Thank you. All right, we have several things on this agenda, so I'm going to move right along. We have public comment, and we probably have a sheet of people, yes we do, who've signed up, and I appreciate their patience as well. I don't think we've ever had an agency meeting last quite as long as that one did, but it was a good discussion. All right. We will start with Lynette Henshaw, followed by Jean Henshaw. And you may use either of the podiums, and you have three minutes. At the end of two minutes, the amber light comes on. And then at the end of the three minutes, the red light comes on. And you just introduce yourself and state your address, please.
Lynette Henshaw, 2424 Southwest Oakwood Drive, Dallas, Oregon. And I thank you for hearing us today. We are speaking on the, our county commissioners have put levy on the ballot for May 19th. And I'm the treasurer of the PAC that is called Neighbors, Friends and, I can't even get it right, Friends and Neighbors for a Safe and Prosperous Community. It's a long one, but it's strictly a grassroots group. There's a lot of misconceptions about the need for Polk County Sheriff. And one of them is that the cities with their own police forces may not need countywide services provided by the sheriff's office, such as backup for city police, serving civil complaints, providing search and rescue, and providing jail space and confinement for all those arrested by the city police. The DA's office, which prosecutes city crimes, and without whom criminals would be released back onto the streets. Community Corrections Department supervises post convictions, parole, and probation, as well as juvenile crimes. All of these services help keep city streets and neighborhoods safer. And we ask that you consider this, and we ask for your support. I thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming down and appreciate the time you're spending on this. Are there any questions for Mrs. Henshaw? All right, thank you so much. Jean Henshaw, followed by John Gallagher. Welcome, and you actually have the same amount of time, two minutes and one minute. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. My name is Jean Henshaw. I reside at 2424 Southwest Oakwood Drive, Dallas, Oregon. I'm a member of the Political Action Committee, Friends and Neighbors for a Safe and Prosperous Community. And I want to emphasize how important that is for the citizens of West Salem. All the good citizens of West Salem and the community leaders have joined in our grassroots operation to be dedicated to getting this measure passed. I know some Salem police officers who are very happy to arrest someone in Polk County because they know they're going to go to jail. It's not always the case in other areas. So it's important for the safety of the West Salem residents to get this measure passed. We ask for your support. We would like nothing better than to have the city of Salem listed as one of our supporters. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I forgot to ask if there were questions of counselors. No, all right, thank you so much. Our next person signed up is John Gallagher, followed by Susan Gallagher.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Welcome.
City Manager Norris, members of city council, and members of the audience. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on Agenda Item 7D, which we'll cover later. Myself, my wife Susan, and the staff at Gallagher Fitness Resources are pleased to announce that we are well into the planning stages for the inaugural High Street Hustle 8K, 5K Run and Walk, and 1K Kids Run to be held on Saturday morning, August 15, 2015, at 7:30 in the morning. Our vision, along with major sponsors, Salem Health and New Balance Athletic Shoe Company, is to produce a community-wide wellness event on that Saturday morning. The High Street Hustle will tie together the businesses and the neighborhoods of Can Do and Scan with a ribbon of Imagine This, over 2,000 people hustling to prevent heart disease in our community. As you have seen in your counselor packets, the High Street Hustle course begins in front of the State Capitol on Court Street, uses the streets, runs west to High Street, leaving downtown and passing through the scenic greenway that lines High Street along Pringle Creek and Bush's Pasture Park. The course continues south, up the hill, past McKinley Grade School, making a loop on Wildwind, Summer, and Judson Streets, then returning north down High Street and finishing at the State Capitol. At this time, I'd like to share with everyone our event logo. So as you can see, we've got the State Capitol represented there, representation of McKinley Grade School, a big red heart on top to signify our goal to raise awareness of heart disease in this community. And yeah, it's got kind of a groovy 70s.
Blue separate.
Yeah, kind of, kind of set up there. The whole theme is fun. We want to encourage runners and walkers to dress in 70s costumes if they wish, but the main thing is participate and be aware of what heart disease does in our neighborhood. With over 25 years of involvement within the Salem running and walking community, we know with certainty that a running and walking event of this magnitude has never occurred in the streets of Salem. We take responsibility, take the responsibility seriously, and we assure you that our goal is a community-driven event that is safe, well-planned, and enjoyable for everyone involved. While the direct impact to the neighborhood and businesses will be limited to 90 minutes that morning, we want to create as little convenience as possible, as little inconvenience as possible before, during, and after the race. We have been working with the city of Salem staff, as well as the Oregon Department of Transportation, and Salem Hospital Emergency Department for months to coordinate a safe and well-planned event. Our discussions, yeah, almost done. Our discussions and planning with those entities will continue as we formulate the communication needed to make everyone aware of the temporary street closures. We have reached out to our customer base and have identified a number of residents in the affected neighborhoods who are willing to assist us with pre-event communications. Already, there's an overwhelming response in support of the High Street Hustle.
I'm going to have to ask you if you can wrap up, but I will ask, are there questions of counselors? Counselor Ben Arz?
Thank you, John, for coming down here and putting this event together. I know you've put on so many events for this community and making us a healthier community, certainly our Friday on our Feets program. So I had a curiosity, why did, we've had so many 5Ks and 8Ks or other races that always center around Bush Park or Minto, how did we ever end up on High Street?
The whole idea on this is to, kind of the classic 8K course that we see up in Portland a lot, of up a hill, up a hill, up a hill, turn around, come back down that hill. The challenge that provides walkers as well as runners, the challenge it provides to a heart, the whole idea of cardiovascular health, it's just, and particularly the downtown to South Salem, to Scan neighborhood, along Bush Park, just the beauty, really, that that provides. This is not a one-and-done event. This is something that Salem Hospital and New Balance and us have committed to a three-to-five year run, at least, and make it really a community-wide event. Goes on for months, building up to it, and...
So I hope at some point, somebody considers the Medrona Hill Hustle or the High Low Road Hustle. Talking about hills. Thank you, John.
Those are a little, a little steeper.
Are there further questions for Mr. Gallagher? All right, thank you very much. Next on the list is Susan Gallagher, followed by EM Easterly.
Thank you. I'm Susan Gallagher from Ward 2. I own Gallagher Fitness Resources. I'm addressing 7D once again, and thank you, Madam Mayor, city manager Norris, counselors and staff. Heart disease is the leading cause of death in both men and women in the United States. In Marion and Polk Counties alone, 65% of adults are overweight or obese, and more than a quarter struggle with high blood pressure and high cholesterol. The cost of heart disease, including medications, treatment, and lost productivity is more than $100 billion each year. What if we could change that? Research has shown that regular exercise and a healthy diet can significantly reduce the risk of heart disease and other chronic conditions such as diabetes. This is not new information, but it can be a challenge for someone who has never had healthy habits to develop and maintain them. What if we could change that too? too? The High Street Hustle 8K, 5K, and 1K Kids Run will be Saturday, August 15th, 2015. The hustle is more than a road race. It's a coordinated effort to encourage the residents of Salem and surrounding communities to take responsibility for their health with assistance from others. High Street hustlers may choose to receive a training plan catered to their ability, participate in group runs and walks, biometric screening, workshops led by local health professionals and support groups that will catapult them toward their goal of a finisher's t-shirt and a healthier lifestyle. And I'd like to share with you a letter of support from the Can Do Neighborhood Association. The Can Do Board enthusiastically supports John and Susan Gallagher's proposed High Street Hustle event to be held on August 15th, 2015. With great care and attention to detail, John and Susan have put together a plan for a fun and well-focused outdoor community gathering where, at least for a few hours, we can all slow down our busy lives and enjoy a fine summer walking and running together through two great Salem neighborhoods, getting to know one another a little bit better. The Can Do Board urges you to approve and support their proposal and to help make the High Street Hustle an annual signature event for our city. And that's from Michael Livingston, the Can Do Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions for Mrs. Gallagher? All right. Thank you so much for coming, and thanks for all your hard work to put this together. I think it's going to be a great event. Thank you so much. All right. Mr. Easterly, followed by Commissioner Craig Pope.
Good evening, Mayor. Good meeting, members of the City Council. That was an intriguing experience, walking through the process of the Urban Renewal Agency. Thank you all for that entertaining process. I hate having to follow the Gallaghers. That was so exciting. But I want to talk about something your, our mayor did over the last couple of weeks, several weeks. She came out and listened to, and participated, and testified in favor of and before the Polk County Commissioners. Now, for those out there in TV land, there is a part of Salem called West Salem that's in Polk County. In Polk County, as someone said, I believe it was Mr. Henshaw, police officers, and we in West Salem know this very well, love arresting people in the City of Salem because they can take them out to a jail that always has a welcoming committee for them. There is something important happening in Polk County. It's called Public Safety System. For most of us, it starts with something called a 9/11 call. For that 9/11 call to work, it means there has to be someone out there to respond to that 9/11 call. Mrs. Henshaw described the whole complexity of the public safety system. Well, right now, it's broke in Polk County, and it may well get more broke. And the simple reason that it's broke, from my perspective, is that we used to be a two-income family. One was the public area of timber resources or federal assets. That's gone away. But we still have the same needs and costs and expenses. So it becomes upon us, the members of the community of Polk County, to come forth and fund. The mayor is presenting and asking you as a council to support and endorse a levy for public safety in Polk County. I urge you to do so on behalf of all of West Salem, of all of Polk County. It's important. We need everybody to get forth for the reasons that the Henshaws gave us just a few minutes ago. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming down tonight. Are there questions? All right. Thank you very much. Commissioner Pope, thank you for coming to our council session this evening. I apologize that you had to wait so long.
No apology necessary. Thank you for the opportunity. So Mayor Peterson and members of the council, staff, and members of the public, I am Craig Pope, Polk County Commissioner, Polk County Courthouse, Dallas, Oregon. I'm here tonight to encourage you to listen carefully and support the resolution that the mayor is going to put forth later this evening because we really need your help. You know, this is our second attempt at putting a public safety levy before the people of Polk County, and the residents of West Salem clearly are a part of that contingent, and we're very concerned that they get some support from all of the elected officials in their county. So this is the place where we know it really is going to matter a great deal to West Salem residents. I am thrilled that we have the citizens engage this particular levy opportunity that we didn't really have as engaged the last time. We've got a pretty good body of people. I don't know what the numbers are of signups, but folks that have asked to join the committee, but it's pretty good. And it was a place where I can tell you that my position was, and I do believe I can speak for the other two commissioners, that we didn't see much likelihood of success putting this levy on the ballot for May of 2015 if we didn't have more citizen engagement than we had in 2013. And that has happened, and I've been very, very pleased. And so it was a whole lot easier for us to make the decision to put this levy on the ballot in May of 2015. We know it's a very short timeline. There have been a number of folks who have suggested that we should put it off and have more time to campaign. My position, and again, I think I speak for the other two commissioners, when we believe that we've had a lot of press, a lot of opportunity for folks to hear what the real concerns are. We really don't want to put this off longer to a point where a real tragedy happens that could have been avoided if we were properly staffing. So we think this is the right time. We're doing our best to raise the dollars it takes to run a real campaign, and we're working hard to get this passed in May of 2015. So I really need your help, and I really would appreciate your support. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Are there questions? I see Counselor Benars, followed by Counselor Anderson.
Just a quick question. So is this a vote that has to have a supermajority?
No.
It's straight up and down. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you for coming down and sitting through our Urban Renewal Agencies.
I learned a lot. It was fascinating.
Well, I think so did we all. When do, is there going to be a voter pamphlet here? And if so, when does that material need to get in? And when would you, what's the hurry? What is the timeline for your wanting our endorsement?
Well, I don't believe we'll have a voter's pamphlet because we've been told that we would have to pay that. It's about $30,000. Clearly, the urgency, from my point of view, is your endorsement helps the press get that word on the street. I think the sooner the better for every elected official be engaged.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any further questions? All right. Thank you for coming. Appreciate that very much. Next is Ron Sturba, followed by John Christensen.
Ron Sturba, 520th Street, Northeast Salem, Ward 1, Mr. Bennett. Madam Mayor, good evening, and council members and city staff, and I want to welcome the new councilors. Thank you very much for volunteering as members. I'm an AARP member now, and I come here to speak about the Salem Revised Code, Chapter 70-A, on the Street Light Proposal Program. You know, I've been an advocate of good lighting in this city for streetlights, and I continue to follow through for the city. I've researched a lot, and I think I can add a little bit to what the city already has as far as information on streetlights. I would support the proposed streetlight program on a couple of conditions, and that is a fee, excuse me, a fee to take care of the purchase of the fixtures and the installation. I have no problem with that fee. I wouldn't want to see that fee continued in the years just for the operation of the fee. I'd like to see just the operation of electricity as a fee on my property taxes. I could go that way, not a continuation of that fee. I'd also like to see city, or the citizens' involvement with Public Works on the decision-making. I think the different parts of the city require a different type of lighting. Foremost, we have a large retirement community, and they have different types of lighting needs than the younger folks. The cones and the rods in our eyes are different for us older folks compared to the younger ones. Glare is a big issue. And so what I'm asking for is different types of lighting. The East Salem Service District has an excellent streetlight that doesn't have any shadowing to it. Also, the new streetlights installed at Corden Road and Lancaster, that new whiting project, excellent lighting. So I would be glad to be on any committee the city has to offer my information that I've gathered over the last year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your testimony always. Counselors, questions? Counselor Lewis?
So you would say you'd be in favor of the streetlight? Are you talking about putting in new streetlights, or are you talking about replacing the bulbs with the different types of, like, the LED bulbs?
Well, the high-pressure sodium light, which is the yellow-tinted lights, are due to come out for the expensive operation and replacement costs and the short life of that lamp. The city is going with a LED lamp. What we've seen in the city is the fixture in my neighborhood is a lamp for a two-lane street, and those are put at four-lane intersections. So once that a street's going this direction, you get more light than the street's going this way. And I've seen demonstrated by the different types of models, East Salem Service District, also the new Lancaster and Corden Road, to be a much better light, a more even footprint. The current ones in my neighborhood are a shadow, and there's a shadow underneath the lamp itself, especially in wet weather. So my concerns here are about paying the right price for the right fixtures and the installation, then going back to an operational fee for the lights in the city.
Okay. So, and then maybe I said, how would you suggest paying for the ongoing electrical cost?
With the fee, I just, right now, as I think it was Estatesman Journal this morning, state head figures from Public Works at less than $2 million for the project. I don't know the breakdown of whether that fee was going to be a continuance on each year, or if it was going to be reduced for strictly the energy costs on the lamp itself, once the initial project is done in the city.
Are there further questions? All right.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming down. John Christensen, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For the record, three minutes, right?
That's right.
Okay. For the record, John Christensen, I live in Ward 2, and I'm active in some of our civic issues in South-South Salem. I have a couple personal comments I'd like to make about the meeting. Wear white at night, even though I've got a black coat on. I often, I watch pedestrian activity in our neighborhood. And when I was a kid, we had posters, and we were told to wear light colors at night. I haven't seen that type of campaign for years, and I wanted to bring that forward. The other comment is I'd like to thank our city manager, Lynn Norris, for her work. The few times that I've engaged with her, she's been very, very, very good, very kind, very complimentary. And the other comment I'd like to make is, thank you for the Purple Heart City. My father was on a B-17, and he was injured, and he received a Purple Heart. And my mom actually worked on the Berlin Wall back in Washington, DC, so I know about it. The comment I have tonight is about the proposed 5K run, which is primarily in my neighborhood. And actually, I live virtually on High Street. And I'm really pleased with the run. I've wanted to see that type of run. I've also wanted to see a bike race, which I think would be phenomenal. But I mentioned to Mr. Gallagher and Mrs. Gallagher that I didn't explain all why, but I have worked with individuals that have been affected by prostitution and street hustling. And I talked to a gentleman from the Mexican-American business community the other day, and he said to me, the word "high," the word "high" doesn't mean a street, in the second language that he learned. It meant intoxication. It meant drugs. Hustle means street hustle. Look it up in the dictionary. It's there. It means illicit drugs. It means prostitution, male and female. And with regard to that, I worked in the Senate, and I discovered a lot of these issues, which I was unaware of. And 87% of the street prostitutes are victims of sex assault and incest, it's children. And physical assault, violence, they're out there on the street hustling. I, when I worked on the issue, a woman came and told me she was kidnapped, she was drugged, and she was put out on the street. Another woman came and said, "I was out hustling, and I ran away from it. I reestablished my life." She became a teacher in Eugene, and one day, they came and took her away from the class after 10 years of teaching because she had a misdemeanor because of prostitution.
I am going to have to remind you that the red light is, your time is up. Can you wrap up?
Yes, ma'am. I just would like to say, I'd like to see us be more careful about the words we use for events that affect children in residential neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Christensen? Okay. Thanks for coming down. Appreciate your testimony.
Manager Norris?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else that came this evening that wanted to sign up and didn't get a chance to sign up to testify at this portion of the meeting? Okay. Thank you very much. We're going to move to the next item on the agenda, which is the Consent Calendar. Member Counselor Nanki, do you have a motion for us?
I do, Madam Mayor. We're not pulling everything off the agenda, so it should be fairly short on the poll section here. So I would move the Consent Calendar with the following poll, 3.3B, by Counselor Lewis.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Nanki and seconded by Counselor Benars to move the Consent Calendar with the exception of the one-poll item 3.3B being polled by Counselor Lewis. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. We will now move to public hearings. Would the recorder please introduce the public hearing 4.8?
The City Council will now hold a public hearing for the purpose of considering an amendment to the current solid waste management services franchise agreements to reference the solid waste management services franchise fee established in Salem Revised Code, Section 47.097.
Thank you. And is there a staff report? Welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Ryan Zink. I am the franchise administrator for the City of Salem. This evening's public hearing is regarding an amendment to the solid waste services franchise agreements currently held with the city's six solid waste franchisees, and is the final step in a process that started this last fall. Brief, just briefly, on October 13th, public hearing was held regarding both a proposed increase to the solid waste management services franchise fee from 5% to 7%, as well as a proposed increase increase to the solid waste collection rates. And following that, on November 10th, city council did approve an increase to the franchise fee to 7%. And on November 17th, city council established a new solid waste, established new solid waste collection rates effective January 1. So, tonight's public hearing is the final step in the process, which is to memorialize the increase of the franchise fee within the franchise agreements. However, instead of simply changing the franchise fee amount listed in the agreements from 5% to 7%, staff is proposing that this amendment, proposing within this amendment to remove the specific franchise fee amount and instead reference the solid waste management code within which the franchise fee is established as already approved by city council. This amendment streamlines the process and had this change already been made, tonight's public hearing would not have been necessary particularly for an issue already vetted by the public and already approved by city council. Staff recommends that city council authorize the city manager to execute a mandatory agreement number three to amend the terms of the current agreements with the city's solid waste management services franchisees to directly reference the solid waste management services franchise fee established in Salem Revised Code 47.097. And I'm happy to answer any questions following the public testimony. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And do we have anyone signed up? I don't see anyone signed up. Was there anyone here this evening that did want to provide testimony? All right. Seeing none, we will proceed to questions from counselors for staff. Are there questions? I see none. All right. We will close the public hearing. Thank you. And Counselor Nanki, do you have a motion for us?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I would move staff recommendation.
It's been moved by Counselor Nanki and seconded by Counselor Bennett to move the staff recommendation. Is there discussion?
I'd just like to say it's always a good thing to not have to do multiple things to get to a specified end once you've already done all of that. And anytime we can include by reference something that changes, similar to what we do with state law inside of our own codes, more the better and the less amount of work people have to do, which serves no purpose.
All right. Any further comment? All right. Call for the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll move to our second public hearing, 4B. Would the recorder please introduce that hearing?
The city council will now hold a public hearing for the purpose of hearing an appeal of the planning administrator's decision approving the consolidated applications for site plan review, urban growth area preliminary declaration, and driveway approach permit for the property located at the 3500 block of Trelstead Avenue Southeast. The criteria applicable to these consolidated applications are Salem Revised Code 200.025D, 220.05F3, and 804.025D. The hearing will be conducted with the staff presentation first, followed by the applicant neighborhood association, other interested persons, and an applicant's rebuttal. Failure to raise an issue prior to the close of the public hearing in person or in writing or failure to provide the statements or evidence with sufficient specificity to provide the applicant and the city council an opportunity to respond to this issue precludes appeal to the land use board of appeals on that issue. A similar failure to raise constitutional issues relating to proposed conditions of approval precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Following the close of the public hearing, a decision will be issued and mailed to the appellant, applicant, property owner, affected neighborhood associations, and anyone who participated in the hearing either in person or in writing, and anyone who requested to receive notice of the decision.
Thank you very much. I'd like to call for ex-party contact comments from any of our counselors. All right. There were none apparently. We'll move to the staff report.
Thank you. Can you turn on the display, please? Thanks. And good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. My name is Aaron Panko with the Planning Division. We are here tonight to discuss an appeal of the consolidated application for site plan review, urban growth preliminary declaration, and driveway approach permit for a property located at the 3500 block of Trelstead Avenue Southeast. At this time, I'd like to enter into the record the staff report, including its attachments. Have at least one screen going. This is a vicinity map of the subject property. The property is located on Trelstead Avenue Southeast, north of Kubler Boulevard and east of I-5. The planning administrator recently approved a consolidated application for development of a new facility for the Oregon State Police, including three new buildings for office use and vehicle maintenance, and an outdoor vehicle storage area. The facility will be developed by a private landowner and leased by the state police. An appeal of the decision was received from a neighboring property owner. The review authority for an appeal of a case which involves an urban growth preliminary declaration is the city council. This is an aerial photo of the property and surrounding area. The property is approximately 10.7 acres in size and is currently vacant. It was previously used for agriculture. The uses in the immediate area remain primarily residential. Across the railroad and to the east are industrial uses, including sequential biofuels on Turner Road. Trelstead Avenue west of the intersection with 36th Avenue is designated as a minor arterial, represented by the blue line on the map. East of the intersection and along the frontage with the subject property, Trelstead is designated as a local street. The subject property is zoned general industrial and the comprehensive plan designation for the property is industrial. The general industrial zone is represented in gray on the map. Abutting zones in the area are zoned general industrial, industrial commercial, which is represented by the purple area, and residential agriculture that's represented in green. An appeal was received from a neighboring property owner. The basis for the appeal is a perceived lack of adequate transportation improvements required for construction of the state police facility. This slide helps to give a land use history of the surrounding area and a context to the transportation-related issues. There are some comprehensive plan change and zone change applications, 09-08 and 10-04, which were approved to the west of the property, both which changed the comprehensive plan designation from developing residential to industrial commercial, and the zoning designation from residential agriculture to industrial commercial. These applications were subject to the transportation planning rule, or TPR. The TPR requires that if an amendment to either a comprehensive plan designation or zoning district will significantly affect a planned or existing transportation facility, then the local government must impose measures that will mitigate the impact of the amendment. Conditions of approval were required in both cases with a series of mitigations based on traffic volume thresholds generated by future development of these properties. In January of this year, the planning commission granted another comprehensive plan change and zone change application on Marietta Avenue. This application did not include the same conditions as the others, but is subject to a trip cap which limits the traffic impact for future development. An appeal was received from one of the neighboring property owners whose comprehensive plan change and zone change decision required construction of transportation improvements. This photo is from Trelstead Avenue, looking at the intersection of Trelstead and 36th Avenue, just north of Kubler, looking west away from the property. And this photo looks east from the same intersection and shows the subject property and the existing conditions of both Trelstead, which follows that yellow line, and 36th Avenue at the intersection. Beyond the street sign, Trelstead Avenue is designated as a local street. This is the proposed site plan. There are three new buildings and an outdoor vehicle storage area proposed for the state police facility. One driveway access is proposed directly to Trelstead Avenue, and three driveways are proposed on the private street that will be constructed along the east boundary of the property. Emergency services uses are permitted use in the IG zone. The development as proposed and conditioned was found to be in conformance with applicable development standards. Transportation-related conditions have been placed on the development. The applicant is required to construct the full street improvement along the entire frontage of Trelstead Avenue. This means the street will be widened and resurfaced to a width and cross-section appropriate for a local street and construction of a sidewalk. The applicant is required to widen 36th Avenue in order to provide a bike lane and dedicated right-turn lane, and finally, to realign the easterly leg of Trelstead so that it forms a 90-degree intersection angle, intersecting angle with 36th Avenue. These improvements were specified in the applicant's traffic impact analysis. Analysis of Trelstead Avenue west of the intersection with 36th was not warranted with this application because the number of anticipated westbound trips at the intersection is only 38, which is less than the 50-trip threshold required for further study. This slide shows the required mitigations for the properties that were subject to the comprehensive plan change and zone change conditions. It is unknown how the comprehensive plan change, zone change properties will be developed or what the future uses will be. So, conditions were placed on these decisions that are proportional to the potential impact to the transportation system based on peak hour trips. The greater the impact, the greater the required mitigation. Mitigation is not required for development of these properties until the number of peak hour trips exceed 300. At 500 peak hour trips, there are three additional levels of mitigation required. And finally, when future development exceeds 700 peak hour trips, the last four mitigations are required to be constructed. In contrast, the traffic impact for the proposed state police facility is known. The number of peak hour trips is estimated at 254. As discussed in slide nine, there are three transportation-related improvements required for the police facility. If we compare the two, we can see that the state police facility, in addition to the frontage requirements improvements along Trelstead, is also required to construct a separate right-turn lane at 36th and Kubler. This is the same improvement that the comp plan zone change properties are required to do at 300 trips. The transportation improvements required for the proposed development are adequate to satisfy the criteria for approval of the site plan review and urban growth preliminary declaration applications, and are appropriate mitigations based on the traffic impact for this development. No comments were received from the neighborhood association or surrounding property owners during the comment period. We did receive two letters earlier today prior to the hearing. One was from the applicant's representative and a second from a separate property owner objecting to the proposed development. Staff recommends that council affirm the planning administrator's decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone signed up to testify? All right, let's see. And the applicant is... All right, we're going to guess that the applicant is Connie Rathbourn. Is that correct? Thank you. And you will have 15 minutes. No, I'm sorry, you have 10 minutes for your testimony.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and counselors.
Thank you, welcome.
And I will not take anything close to 10 minutes. We would like to support and thank the staff for an excellent analysis of the traffic impacts to this site. We did submit earlier today a report. I'm happy to answer questions. We've got our traffic engineers here to answer questions as well. So, we would like to reserve any remaining time for the rebuttal if necessary. So, if people have questions, I'd like to enter that report into the record to the extent that's needed to do officially, but any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Thank you very much. And you are the attorney for the applicant?
The attorney for the applicant, Connie Rathbourn.
Thank you. All right. Are there questions? Counselor Benars?
I just want to point a clarification. There is a letter in here. There is no address as to who it came from, and there's no signature at the end either. So, I had a hard time deciding who had written the letter.
Yes, we submitted that. We noticed that error and submitted it later in the day.
Okay, so that is the letter that starts with the Honorable Anna M. Peterson, common mayor.
Yes, correct. Correct, thank you. Other questions?
All right. Well, then we can move to the next person who is on this list, Wallace Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I may take all my time. I usually do.
Actually, you have three minutes. Okay.
The, I've got three exhibits I'd like to pass out. And then I, unfortunately, there is a development agreement and that, if I've only got three minutes, I want to focus on the development agreement. As staff pointed out, there is, my client is Jeff Maggie, who owns the, what was called the Litchfield property that has been discussed. He filed his application and the Trelstead folks who owned this property before, apparently the current owner, filed an appeal and a development agreement was entered into to resolve that appeal. The development agreement I have here for the record, I don't have copies, it's long, but it affects the property. It's a binding legal agreement. It affects the successors of the property. And what I passed out for you today is, we'll show you the primary conflict. A part of the development agreement provided that 36th would be extended over and across the subject property. And I have a document here that shows the Maggie property in relationship to the site plan. And in yellow is a drawing that shows Exhibit F from the development agreement. And the development agreement exhibit says Trelstead, and in this case, you can wipe out Trelstead and put whoever the property owner is, the developer, I would imagine, agrees to provide the needed right-of-way and slope easements for the extension of 36th Avenue as shown on Exhibit F. And this shows what Exhibit F looks like. And you can see that it is about 90% on the subject property. It has a completely different design at the intersection of where Kubler and Trelstead come together with 36th. And it encroaches on the access point, the parking lot, the building number one. As you can see, there's a hill there, and the extension of 36th was to serve this entire area, which has been pointed out is all industrial. This is general industrial, industrial commercial. This just got approved. And so, this extension of 36th was agreed to between this property owner and this property owner to extend 36th up, and then it goes across my client's property and connects into Trelstead Avenue to provide a second access point for all of these properties. And so, now all of a sudden, we've got a new owner who's disregarding this. We don't want to have to sue him, but we don't want the city to be in a position of approving a site plan that clearly violates a binding contract. That's on top of the fact, and I noticed my red light.
Yes, I'm sorry. You are going to have to wrap up if you can.
But that's on top of the fact that all of these properties use Trelstead West, which was not looked at. When you look at my client's property, they looked very seriously at all the traffic that'd be put on Trelstead West. When they looked at the...
Your three minutes is up.
The Sparks property, lots of traffic, 8,000 trip count. And yet, it wasn't looked at here. So, we urge you to deny the application. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions from counselors?
I did have...
I see several hands up. I want to call on Counselor Bennett, and then Counselor Anderson, and then Counselor Lewis.
I did, before I answer questions, because we had some new material come in that I haven't had a chance to look at, I would like to have the record left open.
Okay. All right. Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not sure, Mr. Lee, if it's you I should ask or the city attorney, but I'm not, I'm not sure, it's clear to me what our role is in enforcing a development contract like this. I'm just not sure I understand it. All right. What, kind of what your argument is in that way?
Well, we're not asking you to enforce a development agreement. It has a mediation attorney's fees. It's got the binding provisions in it. And I will, if this project moves forward, that is how I will go because it's a clear violation. What I'm, what I want the city to be aware of is the fact that you're being asked to approve a development plan that is in clear violation of a binding contract.
Well, it sounds like we've got kind of a double-down good deal on the roads, kind of. Maybe I misunderstood it.
I think our city attorney has an answer to present here.
In regard to the development agreement, I don't believe it's been submitted into the record, so I'm not sure who the parties are, but generally speaking, the SRC, Chapter 110, provides that we apply our...
110, provides that we apply our code irrespective of any private easements or documents or covenants and that sort of thing.
Thank you.
I did submit the...I only had one copy. Thank you. Any other questions?
I believe Counselor...excuse me. Yes, Counselor Anderson is second, and then Counselor Lewis is third. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. So, the development agreement at one point was signed by the owner of the subject property? Not the current owner, but our prior owner?
Right.
And that agreement is only binding between the parties. How does it bind the new owner of the property?
Because the agreement provides that it does. Section 13, the agreement is binding upon the heirs, successors, and assigns.
So, then your assumption is that the new purchasers of the subject property brought it subject to that development agreement?
It isn't an assumption, it's the law. Okay?
Counselor Lewis.
Do you have the recording information of that agreement?
It's not recorded.
So, how would you intend on enforcing it?
Because it's binding.
How can you have something binding if I don't know about it?
Well, that would be between you and the buyer, then, or the seller, excuse me. If the seller of the property, Trailstead, did not disclose it, then your cause of action then is against Trailstead.
Well, if I'm an innocent buyer, then the issue is between you and the seller, not me.
No, that's not the way the law reads.
Well, it wasn't my law school.
Well, you better go back to law school then, Mr. Lewis.
Okay. Are there any further questions? All right, thank you very much. We appreciate your testimony. Todd Mobley?
I'm the traffic engineer on behalf of the applicant. I think I'll...
Are you Mr. Mobley?
I am, I'm sorry.
Oh, thank you.
I think I'll save my testimony if the record's going to be open and we can submit in writing, rather than go into detail here this evening.
Is that part of our procedure, that he can do that?
Yes, however, if staff or if the council has any questions for Mr. Mobley now, they can ask them.
All right. Are there any questions? Counselor Benars.
I just want to make sure I have the right document associated. So, you're associated transportation, engineering, and planning?
No, sorry, I didn't give myself a proper introduction.
Yeah, would you please? I should have asked you to do that.
Sorry, I'm Todd Mobley with Lancaster Engineering. We prepared the traffic impact study for the application.
Thank you. All right. Any further questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. There were just the three people signed up to testify for this public hearing, so...
So, at this point in the procedure, you can ask questions of staff and then allow the applicant to come up for rebuttal.
Okay, thank you. Questions of staff? Counselor Bennett, followed by Counselor Anderson.
Well, just a couple, and I'm not sure who to address, so I'll just ask. Was this...was the planning commission or whoever worked out these conditions aware of some sort of an agreement like this? I mean, is this taken into account? I guess number one, and number two, does it matter? This is somebody else's problem. Looks to me like our streets just do great in this whole thing either way.
Lisa Anderson Mobley, I'm the urban planning administrator. I'll answer that, because I actually worked on that case. So, that agreement was worked out after the planning commission's decision on the comp plan zone change. Mr. Trailstead appealed that decision. It came to council, but there was not a public hearing. It got delayed a few times because the parties were working on a private agreement, and they came to that agreement, and so the appeal was withdrawn.
So, this is that agreement?
Yes.
Oh, I thought this was between...this is an old, some sort of...
Yes.
Old agreement.
Yes.
Is this resolved, then? Is this all resolved by some agreement that's been worked out?
Well, so, the agreement Mr. Lee was talking about came about because of the appeal of the comp plan zone change for the adjacent property.
This picture is the one I'm talking about?
Yes.
Oh, I thought this was...oh, I see. This has all been...how long's this been going on?
Well, I'm not sure what you're asking. How long has it been going on?
Well, I thought I understood Mr. Lee to describe this as something that had been between two prior...previous property owners.
Right, so maybe Erin could go back to the map of the previous comp plan zone changes that will maybe help explain this a little bit. There, so the property that's outlined in yellow on the south, there's two of them. One says 09-08, and one says 10-04. When they received comp plan zone changes, all the conditions that Erin was talking about, those eight conditions, were placed on these properties by the planning commission to mitigate their transportation. So, when that decision was made for the 09-08 decision, the adjacent property owner, which is now tonight's subject property, but had a different owner at the time, Mr. Trailstead owned it, he appealed that decision with those conditions to the council. But he withdrew his appeal based on that agreement that was signed between himself and Mr. Maggie. Mr. Maggie is the person that's appealing the site plan review decision tonight. Does that explain it any better?
I don't know. No, it doesn't, but it's...I don't know if it can be explained to my...I'm just not sure I understand how this all came together.
Okay, I'll try one more time. So, the comp plan zone change is outlined here, 09-08. That was in 2009. And so, at that time, Mr. Maggie, the property owner, came to the planning commission and asked to rezone his property from residential agriculture to industrial commercial. And when, as Erin explained, when you ask for comp plan change, if you're...what you're proposing, the new zone, is going to allow more traffic onto the streets, you have to mitigate that traffic if it's going to have a significant effect on the streets. So, at that time, we said, yes, going to an industrial commercial zone will create a lot more traffic than the current residential zone. Therefore, you have to do these eight conditions, which are a whole list of improvements on the different streets there. And we broke those out into phases. So, when you hit three, and that's the table Erin showed, when you hit 300 trips, you have to do this, if the development hits 500 trips, because we didn't know what they're going to build. We don't know what they're going to build. They may never have to do all of that if the development doesn't reach the thresholds. And when that decision was issued by the planning commission, Mr. Trailstead, who owned at the time the adjacent property, he appealed that decision. And so, as part of that appeal, he worked with the owner, Mr. Maggie, of that comp plan zone change, and they worked out this agreement together. And then he withdrew his appeal, so it didn't officially come to the council for review. So, that was in 2009. Since then, Mr. Trailstead has sold his adjacent property to the current property owners, who are going to lease it to the state police, and they've come in and applied for their site plan. Now, Mr. Maggie, because he had all those eight conditions, his appeal that Mr. Lee is representing, he's saying, well, I have to do all these eight conditions. Why doesn't the state police have to do the same eight conditions? And so, what we're trying to explain is because the zoning is not...they're not asking to change the zone. So, we do know what their development is. Therefore, we do know what their transportation impact is. So, we've added conditions that address just that impact, not a whole host of things that may or may not occur there.
Okay, great. Thank you. That really did explain it for me. Thank you.
Okay, we have Counselor Anderson, followed by Counselor McCoy.
First, just a general comment. I'm a bicycle rider, and I ride out...that's the way to get out of town, is to Fairview and go to that, and then you go out Kubler, and then you're in Turner after you go over a hill or two. And I looked at the map that was provided in the council report, and I had no idea where it was. And I go by that street many, many times. There's no 36th Street. Kubler wasn't identified. You know, so I...but it's wonderfully identified here. So, you know, you referred to all these streets in your report, but then the map you have doesn't even show those streets. So, it'd be terrific if we could have something along that lines, then we know...I mean, I ended up figuring out where it was, but not from the map, from my experience. Then, I think this is a point for the city attorney. Two things. Is there an appeal from our decision?
Yes, to the Land Use Board of Appeals.
Okay, we'll go to Lou, because I'm still a little confused about where it goes. It hasn't gone to the hearing office, it was a planning decision, so we're in lieu of the hearing officer here, and then our decision would be appealed to Lou. And then, I suppose if you look at the worst possible case for the owners of the one-time Tressler property, not Tressler, the subject property, let's just call it the subject property, at some point, somebody could be forced to build a street right through where the police department or the state police office is going to be. I mean, worst-case scenario, because if in fact Mr. Lee is correct, then that, you know, that subject...the development agreement is binding on the property and on subsequent owners, and somebody's supposed to build a street through there.
As we noted before, we don't apply...we can't consider private agreements and private covenants. We apply the...
So, I guess the bottom line of that is this would end up being some sort of a...some kind of damage action as opposed to change it physically on the ground action.
I don't really want to comment on someone's private litigation.
That was good.
Okay. Counselor McCoy.
All that being said, I guess this is the city attorney. Are we ruling only on the planning administrator's decision here? Or the...
Right, an appeal to the city council results in a de novo decision, which basically means you're considering it anew. So, this is a brand-new decision that will replace the planning administrator's decision. You can agree with the planning administrator, or you can reach a different decision, or you can reach a modified decision with additional conditions of approval.
Another question, Madam Mayor. And are we supposed to consider this or not? We're not supposed to consider this?
It's part of the record. However, and when we bring back a supplemental report, since the record's going to be held open, we can explain the code provision that requires us to not consider this private agreement as part of making your decision. So, you apply the criteria to the facts, but you don't apply the fact that they have a private agreement between another property owner. That's not part of your consideration. It's not a criteria for this. Your criteria is the code that's applicable there.
Counselor Benjamin.
Would this proposed street that the two parties had agreed to allegedly, would that alleviate any of the additional requirements as the traffic increased? Does that make sense? Because they changed the zone on one property down here, and as there's more traffic, they'd have to do more, as it reaches that threshold, they'd have to more...have more improvements, more improvements. I'm looking to see if the two people got together and said, well, if we put a street up here, then they wouldn't have to...that would alleviate some of those. Would that be possible?
Yeah, Counselor Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director. What that street would do is alleviate the impacts of Trailstead onto 36th. The bigger situation of this area, as you see all those zone changes and comp plan changes, but there's still only two ways in and out of this whole area, and that's underneath the interstate or at the 36th Avenue intersection with Kubler. So, that street would alleviate the...where the local street intersects. There's a big issue that you don't see on an aerial, in that there is a substantial elevation right at the intersection there. And so, that's kind of the other issue playing in here.
Other questions for staff? All right, if we have no further questions for staff, we will...
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Okay, so the applicant gets rebuttal, then you're going to need to consider a motion to keep the record open, and we can discuss that later.
Okay. All right, so rebuttal...oh, excuse me, Counselor Nanki, did you...
No, I was just going to make sure that we addressed the request to keep the record open.
All right. Okay, so we now have...yes, Counselor Benars.
Quick question, in reference to the 120-day rule, are we in violation of that at all?
The 120-day deadline for this decision is March 14th. I think that gives us at least two council meetings.
Yep, the 23rd.
Great. Thanks.
All right, we're ready for rebuttal by the applicant?
Thank you. The one thing that I wanted to emphasize is that 85%, the traffic impact study demonstrates that 85% of the trips going from the subject property will go out 36th then onto Kubler. And so, the portion of the property west of 36th will have very little impact from the subject property. And with respect to leaving the record open, there's a very detailed traffic analysis as it relates to the new objection, the Bonaventure objection. And so, rather than trying to go through that analysis here tonight, we would like to just submit that in writing.
All right, thank you. Yes.
Given the 120-day expires on March 15th, is that correct? March 14th, will you extend the 120 days to the end of March, allow us time to...for you to present the traffic information?
Yes.
Thank you.
Counselor Anderson.
If this is an improper question, will the city attorney let me know? What's your position on this...on the development agreement and the subject road?
I don't have a position this evening on the development agreement and the subject road. Mr. Steve Ward is here this evening. He is the seller of the property to the applicant. He purchased the property on a land sale contract from Mr. Trailstead, and he's been working on this road. If you'd like to hear more about it, I don't think that the city attorney would like that, but I can't give an opinion on that this evening.
I'm happy that he allowed me to ask the question I did, so I don't want to hear anymore.
I've got the band hammer ready, so be careful.
But good try, good try.
Are there other questions by councilors or comments? All right. Does that conclude your rebuttal time?
It does, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right. I understand that the record will be kept open, and Counselor Nanki, then, do you have a motion or...
Well, I actually have a question as to the length of time said record should and would be held open, and when we would continue.
So, if I may, Council President, the typical open record period, assuming you want to close the hearing and keep the record open, and I don't think anyone else wants to testify orally, so I think keeping the record open is fine. Assuming you want to close the hearing, the typical record period is seven days for all parties to submit new evidence, seven days for rebuttal to that evidence, and then a final seven days for the applicant's written argument. Given that they want to produce some traffic information, and they gave us an extension, we might want to extend that to say 14 days for new evidence, and then seven days for rebuttal. So, that would put us on March 20th, or excuse me, February 23rd, 5:00 p.m. for all parties to submit new evidence. March 2nd for all parties to submit rebuttal to the new evidence, and then a seven-day period through March 9th for the applicant's final written argument. And that just happens to coincide with our March 9th meeting.
I would second that motion.
I'll second it.
Or I will make said motion as indicated by staff in regards to the continuation and record.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Nanki and seconded by Counselor Benars to move the staff recommendation and hold the record open for...how many days did you say then?
14.
14 days.
With nine...or another seven days then for rebuttal.
With seven days following that for rebuttal.
If I can just clarify that, that'll keep the record open to all parties through February 23rd, the record open for new evidence. The record opened for all parties through March 2nd for rebuttal to that evidence. That's only argument, that's not new evidence. And then, the applicant only will have seven days from March 2nd to March 9th to submit final written argument.
Correct.
All right. Counselor Benars.
Just out of curiosity, so I realize it's open through the 9th. You close it at 5:00 p.m. on the 9th?
5:00 p.m., yes.
Thank you.
All right, the motion on the floor. Are you ready for the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, we're on to special orders of business, and we have two items. The first will be the annual report by Travel Salem, and we appreciate the amount of time that you've spent here waiting for this time at the microphone. And then, following that, there will be the item that was carried over from the consent calendar. I think we might have a report coming to us. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of council, good evening. I'm Angie Morris, President and CEO of Travel Salem. I'm going to review our 1314 and report with you this evening. But first, I'd like to just take a moment to recognize a couple folks that are in the office and the audience with me. Our Chairman of the Board of Travel Salem is Steve Johnson, and he's with Vips Industries and the Salem Convention Center. And also, our Director of Marketing and Public Relations, Irene Bernards, is here, and our Director of Sales, Debbie McKeon.
We'd like to welcome all of you. Thank you for coming. I'm sorry that you had to wait so long.
It was fascinating. It's really been very interesting. You guys, boy, you have to multitask, I tell you. I don't know how you do it. I know, I know. It was fascinating. So, the last fiscal year was a really amazing year. Travel Salem is evaluated on key performance measurements, and last year was a record-breaking year. The first key performance measurement is estimated economic impact, which grew 3% to $537 million last year. Last year, tourism was responsible for 6,110 direct jobs in the Salem area. The second measurement is transient occupancy tax. Tax collections were the highest on record, growing 19% over the previous year. Lodging partners continue to experience this positive trend. TOT is at a record high. Occupancy is also at a record high. These are exciting results for our market. The TOT influenced by Travel Salem is based on a combination of local and national research. Last year, Travel Salem influenced 51% of the overall TOT, or $1.5 million. I'd like to share with you a few of our key marketing efforts and results. The Travel Cafe and Visitor Information Network served 135,000 visitors last year, an increase of 22%. We promoted more than 2,000 events and assisted 360 relocation inquiries. The Visitor's Guide is a key component to promoting this destination and is a resource for the trip-planning phase, as well as when visitors are on the ground here in the Salem area. The Visitor's Guide is successful due to the combination of compelling visuals, editorial, itineraries, maps, and detailed information for experiencing the Salem area. In your packet this evening, there is a copy of our Visitor's Guide for your reference. TravelSalem.com is a powerful engine to market the Salem area, and last year, traffic to the site was up 14 and 1/2 percent with 270,000 visits from more than 138 countries. This interactive tool allows visitors and event planners to connect directly with local businesses and experience our destination through comprehensive event listings, video tours, and mapping resources. We're active in social media at a very high level. Visitors use social media for trip planning, sharing their experience in photos with friends, and evaluating the service they received. Social media allows us to engage with visitors on their terms, when they want it and how they want it. For instance, on their computer or on their mobile device. Travel Salem is aggressively works, aggressively working to stay at the forefront in promoting the Salem area through these dynamic marketing initiatives. Publicity is a big part of what we do. We secured $1.1 million in media coverage last year. We're continually, continually pitching the area to the media. Consumers believe editorial content more than paid advertising, so this is a strong area of focus for us. The Willamette Valley Visitors Association is a regional volunteer organization that promotes the entire Willamette Valley. Travel Salem serves on the Board of Directors to ensure that the Salem area is represented through all of their marketing initiatives. This is an example of one of the many collaborative partnerships Travel Salem's involved with. This partnership gives us access to international promotions, advertising, and social media campaigns, for example. All of these marketing efforts enhance Salem's reach and our ability to attract visitors. The Willamette Valley is being recognized as a top wine destination internationally, and it benefits Salem to continue this partnership. Tourism is a competitive industry. We're competing with Portland, Eugene, and others to attract conventions and groups to our market, but Salem is well-positioned to compete for that business. I hope you guys get this visual, because staff had a lot of fun putting it together, but we hope it translates, so, anyway.
Fly fishing.
Yeah, right, fly fishing. Last year, Travel Salem secured $3.7 million in economic impact through convention and group business, and $8 million in future business. And this is our esteemed mayor, who was incredibly courageous and jumped on the back of that BMW and, and took a spin on it, and we really appreciated her coming out on site and, and seeing how that event actually worked on the ground. So, the return on investment for our convention program, for every dollar spent, returns another $33 to the market in economic impact. I've covered a lot of ground with you guys tonight, so this slide represents a quick recap of Travel Salem's key efforts and how we're contributing to the overall increases in economic impact in transient occupancy tax. And ultimately, tourism creates local jobs and enhances quality of life in our community. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. We'll try to get some better photos on your site there. Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I know you're just egging to get several tattoos after you become the biker. Thanks, Angie. Two, two quick ones, just with this Willamette Valley Visitors group and what have you. None of Salem's funds are actually going outside of our municipal boundaries?
That is correct.
In, in that relationship?
That is correct. All of the TOT received from Salem is spent with, with promoting businesses within Salem city limits. It's very strictly managed, so, absolutely not. So, that's why regional partnerships are really important, so that we can promote a regional destination here, because visitors don't recognize geopolitical boundaries, so, but yeah, we're very, very precise in how we manage those dollars.
And then, the, the future wonder must bridge, it's going to make our final connection to a, a significant number of miles of trails. Have we started pushing that out to tourists, potential tourists, or are you waiting to make sure that it's going to actually happen, and then if we set up some kind of events or?
Oh, certainly not waiting until it happens. We're having sort of back-room conversations and, and working that with our partners so they know it's coming. We're working with the city, they're doing a lot of work on opening events for that bridge, and it's going to bring a lot of appeal for this destination, so we're definitely not waiting, but until it's there, we really don't have anything to market, so, but we are getting our ducks in a row, and we're really excited about what that's going to bring to this market.
Oh, yeah.
So, very excited.
I'm interested to see the TOT revenue for that year passing once it actually comes in and see how that moves.
Yes, let's hope so, yeah.
Other questions, Counselor Benars?
Angie, thank you for coming down here tonight. My focus a little bit has been on West Salem because of my involvement in the Urban Renewal Advisory Board there, and it has to do with the softball tournaments that we seem to get in our community. I guess we were just awarded two more coming up for the next two years. What can you say about, I mean, I'm concerned we're going to start losing some of this business if we don't start expanding some of the baseball fields that we have in the community. Have you any feel from when you've talked to these individuals or these associations on what they're asking us as a community to provide so that they would come here?
Yeah, that's a really great question, Counselor, because the softball tournaments are very, very competitive. Debbie McKeon was just back in Reno with ASA bidding on tournaments, national tournaments that we were going after. We're competing with not only sports destinations in Oregon for that type of business, but also ones around the country. So, we were competing for national bids. I think we came in second to Sioux Falls, who had nine fields in one location. We have five, right?
Five, yeah.
So, Medford has a brand-new complex down there, Clackamas County, Washington County. It's very, very competitive. So, we are at a disadvantage because our complex does not provide enough fields, but we have been successful in securing tournaments to fill those, but we definitely would love the opportunity to be able to go after larger tournaments with, with more assets to market, so, yeah.
Are, are you hearing people talking about other facilities that they might need, thinking things like tennis courts, if you had a, a serious to put on a tournament, that kind of, same idea of what can we do as a community?
Right.
Have you heard anything at all?
Well, we have a, a kind of a new sports marketing program that we're executing at Travel Salem, and so our, our staff are out there really talking and looking at those opportunities. I haven't heard anything specifics regarding tennis or whatnot, but there's a lot of soccer inventory looking, you know, hoping, hopefully coming on the market. We're doing some new stuff with the, the CFC complex out there on State Street. I haven't heard anything specific, but Debbie Mc, can you give me a yea or a nay, or? We haven't heard anything additional, but there's a lot of existing inventory that we're looking to leverage right now, so.
If I may, one last question. Also, dear to West Salem, even though it's not my word, there's been a lot of conversation about a hotel in West Salem. Have you heard that from any of the people that come to this, to, to you, to the visitor's center about why isn't there something in West Salem that holds some of the highest population in the city?
Yeah.
And yet, it has, we have a beautiful, wonderful downtown hotel, but nothing in West Salem, I'm surprised.
Yeah, you know, I, I, personally, it's surprising to me, too, I live on the west side, but we haven't heard anything specific from our clients or meeting planners asking for that. It doesn't mean that if, if that asset wasn't available, that it wouldn't be desired, but I've, I've reviewed some feasibility studies that the city did, and the research doesn't seem to support that at this time, that that would be a good investment, that a developer should come in and put a property over there, but that's this time and place, so maybe in a couple of years, you know, we'll be there, but I, I agree with you, I think it'd be a wonderful attraction on that side.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Lewis.
Yeah, the two tournaments that were just booked, those are baseball, right, not softball?
Those are baseball, it's the American Legion, yeah.
Right, right, right. And then, on page 14 of the annual report, there's a graph that kind of causes, just a question, that's the visitors reached. Can you explain that, because it seems to, the numbers seem to be going down over the last five years, and I'm not sure what that indicates.
Yes, so, I believe, and Debbie can confirm if I'm correct on this or not, but in 0910, which I think you might be referring to, there was almost, you know, 79,000 visitors reached through our services program back then. I think that had to do with when we had wrestling here, am I correct? At the pavilion? So, the visitors reached is, it's our, through our services program. So, when we have conventions or tournaments or groups in town, we provide a certain level of service to those groups. And it does fluctuate depending on how much business has been secured or, and so, and so forth. So, depending on whether those groups rebook with us or not, we don't necessarily have control over that, but that fluctuation that you're seeing is we had some really large groups at that time that have moved out of market. For instance, the wrestling tournaments that we had out at the pavilion, they relocated up to Portland. We had a difficult time at that, at that point in time, securing the 400 volunteers that were needed to support those tournaments. So, but we're hoping to get those back here, we're at least looking at options there. But, yes, that is a fluctuating number, and I would be happy to provide Linda Norris with some additional data on that, so that you have a little bit more detail. Be happy to do that.
Counselor McCoy.
So, Angie, visitors reached, it's more like visitors served? I mean, why the reach? It sounds to me like it's visitors served based on the folks that have come in asking for your assistance in the city, is that what we're?
It's a number that we reach when we go out and we work an event.
That's what I mean, yeah. You're servicing the event, so if you're asked for service, that number's going to go up or down? Okay.
Are there other questions or comments from counselors? All right, thank you very much, we appreciate you coming and providing the report, and again, appreciate the staff coming.
Thank you so much for your time, and thank you for your ongoing support of tourism, the tourism industry in Salem. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Okay. We have one item, one other item under special orders of business, and it's the item that was pulled by Counselor Lewis, 3.3B. Counselor Lewis, do you have a motion for us?
I'll go ahead and move staff recommendation.
All right, it's been moved by Counselor Lewis and seconded by Counselor Benars to move the staff recommendation on the item 3.3B. Is there discussion?
Yeah, I'll, I guess I'll put it this way, I'm, the Oregon legislature has been meeting now for only a week, and there are hundreds of bills, and I recognize the need for us to be vigilant and watch them, but I, I'm just, I'm concerned that as a leader of the city, I'm being asked to support comments or things like high priority of support of certain bills that I'm just, I'm uncomfortable in doing that. Two in particular, House Bill 2081 and House Bill 2142, which are both subject to changing the property tax laws. And I recognize that they both have passed, would ultimately go to a vote of the people. And they're both worded to make them sound good. Especially, I like the one 2142, where it would exempt some senior citizens, which I'm rapidly becoming one, if not already there. But I, my hunch is it's, it's written that way to do just that, to get old folks like me to say, "Yeah, let's do that," because I'll be gone soon enough, and then other people who end up with my house will pay the tax. I just, I have a concern about, about changing the property tax, and I just, I recognize the need for funds, and I, and I remember hearing folks coming down here about a year ago, talking about how unfair the property tax system had become, and using examples from neighborhoods in Portland. And when they were asked to give examples here, they said, "Well, there are some, and if it's happening in Portland, it must happen everywhere." But I don't, I don't think that's true. I, I recognize that there are those situations in neighborhoods, not just houses, but neighborhoods in Portland. But I don't think that's, I don't think that's the case here. And so, I, I've just, I'm uncomfortable saying that we, as a city, should be supporting those two bills at a high priority level. And I'm just not comfortable doing that.
I think maybe Counselor Bennett has a comment. I, I don't mean to be cutting you off, Counselor Lewis.
That's all right.
Is that okay?
Yep.
I think he has a, he chairs the legislative subcommittee.
Yeah.
Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. These are League of Oregon City Bills that we have seen before, we have supported before, and I think that's part of what moved them through. And I think if there is, if the council's complexion has changed dramatically relative to this kind of bill, you're certainly, I think, more than welcome to send them back to us and have us reconsider. The priority is based on, I think it's somewhat misleading, the number on the priority, if it's one, it means the mayor goes, if it's two, it means the staff goes, it's that, those priorities are really not a ranking, that just says we support it. And correctly, as you pointed out, this goes to a vote of the people if it were to advance in the session. We have traditionally, I guess, supported this kind of bill, which allows a more flexible local vote and local opportunity for citizens. As you know, I'm sure, going through our budget cycle, only fif, well, 50, 57% of the city's budget is paid for, as I recall, by property taxes, which does not cover the cost of simply police and fire. And it has become a substantial argument that we need to take a look at how to, how to deal with that. But I think it might be more helpful if there's a majority of the council that does not want to take this position. Certainly, individual counselors can do what they'd like, but if the majority doesn't want to do this, what I'd ask you to do is perhaps send them back to us as a committee, and let us bring the League of Oregon Cities folks in to answer questions, they're really there, bills, if that would be helpful. If it is a thing where the council just is... If it is a thing where the council just is, "We just aren't going to vote for anything that relates to property taxes. We don't care how—whether the people get to vote, or don't vote, or any of the rest of it," that's just a different complexion on the councils. So we're, we're sort of reflecting what we, you know, have run into before on this issue. So I appreciate you suggested, as your motion, that we just vote on the whole thing, but I certainly know—I mean, I, I don't think there's any problem with us taking another look at these, if you'd like us to, or bringing in LOC to talk about it.
Yes, definitely, we can do that. And I, I think you're right, that these priorities and positions come from the overall need for what the—you know, what the city's looking at, and what you think is best for the community, and what we need to do in terms of revenue. And cities from across the state get together. When it comes from the league, that really means it comes from groups of mayors and city counselors and, and other people as their recommendation of how to move forward. And it—I think it's important that this council and other councils feel comfortable with that.
I saw a couple of hands, Counselor Nanki and then Counselor Benars.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, and essentially, the, the League of Oregon Cities has policy committees, and they get together and, and pick those things that are most important inside of their purview, and then push those out to all the cities, and we vote and prioritize what they have provided to the cities, and that rose to the, the top level. And we supported that, albeit we supported it with a council that had four different people a couple of months ago, which is always interesting. That being said, I'll be doing more educational events in that light as well, and I see Mr. Lacy's back here as well. And we do have the same issues as Portland in regards to property tax inequities across the, the system as well. And we've talked about those programs several times, but it, it would be good, because the, the league discussions on that, if we can't sell it in the state capital, we aren't going to sell it to the state capital. And so, like I say, I plan on doing more education as well. I don't know where it's sitting inside of the system right now either. But we know that the system is broken. We look at our general fund revenue and, and the sources, and we just slowly keep moving into a hole. We talk about the cliff. We keep pushing that cliff out to the edge, but it's not that we aren't cutting services along the way. So somewhere along the line, we have to look at how to change the system as it is, because pretty soon, all we'll have is police and fire, and—
Okay. Counselor— Counselor Benars?
So I'm going to start with a little bit of a question, a procedural question. I support so many of the recommendations that the legislative committee, and I appreciate the time check that you have—I think you've chaired that for quite a few years at this point, to your knowledge and the background of the legislature. I actually came up with only one of the bills that I—I—well, it bothers me. So my vote tonight was going to be, I'll vote for the motion, with the exception of this one. It was House Bill 2081, which was reset at sale issue. And I didn't know, at this point, do we want to refer this back to the legis—to the legislative committee, or do we go ahead with the vote? How would you like to handle it?
Actually, that's kind of an—you're describing—we haven't—I don't know. What do you, what do you say, Madam—
Well, we have, on occasion, held back two or three and passed the other ones. And Mr. Duncan, I don't know what the timing is for some of these.
I'm not aware with these particular bills of any pending hearings that are coming up in the near future. These are long-term issues that have been brought before legislature on several occasions. And so if, if the council were so inclined to wait, we could certainly bring those back at another time. Procedurally, we've also, in previous years, had the council approve, with the exception of a no vote registered by certain council members on certain bills. That's certainly an option available to the council as well.
Well, it sounds like two of us have our mind on HB 2081.
Counselor Lewis, and then Counselor McCoy?
Yeah, I, I believe it's my understanding that the, the two are intertwined, 2081 and House Bill 2142, and if both are passed, they'll end up on the ballot together. And you know what? I, I agree. I, I don't know if I'll live to see it, but I believe the state of Oregon needs to have a conversation about its tax structure. We seem to do everything but that. I can remember probably 50 years ago, I think it was Milton Friedman talked about the flat tax. And it seemed to be, to a 15-year-old kid, pretty fair sounding. It still gets some publicity 50 years later. I'm not sure if it's the right thing to do. All I know is what we have now pisses off just about everybody. The voters got upset enough where they passed some pretty stupid bills, some pretty stupid measures, and now we have to live with them. And I get worried when, when we go back to them and say, "Hey, we just want to tweak a little bit." And when they come back and say, "No, we really meant no," then we get into, into a deeper hole. And I just—I don't want to go to that direction. I, I don't want to have the animosity that we had seven, eight years ago. So I would—and I do appreciate the work that the legislative committee's done. When I read through, you know, the 30 bills, it—I'm glad I'm not on that committee. I appreciate it, because most of them, quite frankly, I, I've—I had no problem with. If we could agree to send these two back and just hold off on them for a while, then I've got no problem with sending the other 28 through.
But why don't—
I, I think Counselor McCoy just wanted to say something, and then we'll go back to Counselor Bennett.
You know, I, I serve on the committee, and the way I look at this is, is a couple of things. One, there's clearly a funding issue for the city, not only the city, every city in the state, every local municipality in the state. And really, to some degree, it isn't recognized by the citizens because of the great work that past councils have done, and the folks over here do every day with dwindling resources. They don't understand the severity of the problem and the cuts that are being made, because you made do, and you made do, and we've made do, and we've come to put on band-aids, and the day's coming here pretty soon where that's not going to work, and I think it's right around the corner. Now, putting—I think it's interesting that both the, the bills that have been pointed out are constitutional amendments. I mean, they're referrals, number one. It's not going to—they're going to get passed by the legislature, and all that means is it gets referred to the voters for a vote. I look at this, these—the kind of bills, if they did pass, if nothing else, it opens up the conversation. It brings the real issues to point in the public, to be debated, to have both sides have their say, to maybe get it a little clearer to the citizen's tree on why this is not working as well as they think it seems to be. And you don't get something for nothing. And so for that reason, I supported, supported them on the committee, because we're not changing any law. All we're doing is referring this to the voters, to have a discussion, and hopefully have a solution if it ever came to that point. But nothing's going to happen either way. If the bills do pass, it's, it's a vote of the people, so.
Counselor Bennett?
Thank you. Well, thank you, Counselor McCoy. I think you really summarized the—I think all of our thinking as we confront these kind of bills. I mean, I think we each have our, our moments of, "We're talking taxes" kind of reaction. What I would suggest is we follow the approach, maybe, that we've done before. It works pretty well, where we just vote on the broader agreement, and then you register your no votes. If we see a majority of no votes, that bill comes back. I mean, it's kind of off the list, and we might ask you if you would meet with, you know, if we could bring LOC in, or some other way to look at it. There was just lack of information initially, but if that's okay, that's how we would like to go ahead, if you, if you don't mind. It has worked well in the past, and allows you to register on issues of—some of these issues just folks want to say no. They just don't buy it.
Two years ago, I did the same thing.
Yeah.
Exactly the same thing.
Okay. So then, will the motion on the floor be a motion to accept the report of the committee, and then with the exception of no votes by so-and-so and so-and-so? Okay.
Yeah.
Similar to how we do the consent calendar.
Like we do the consent calendar?
We'll just register and have a vote on something.
And we have the motion on the floor.
Right.
And now, if we could be allowed, then, if we're going to vote no on any of these, to let people—or say aye with the exception of, or something like that.
Okay, all right. We'll just do it that way. All right. The call for the question, the, the motion on the floor is to approve the staff, the committee report on the legislative priority bills. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Signify by saying no.
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 No on which one?
On House Bill, House Bill 2081 and House Bill 2142.
Okay. So there are two no votes, Benars and Lewis, on those two House bills, 2142?
Two, and 2081.
And 2081. All right. Does that work?
Yeah, we'll just record that in the minutes, and it gives these guys a chance to record.
Right. So all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
And with the two no—with the two no votes. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That was interesting. Yes, all right. Now we are, okay.
Is that two years ago?
I think we're heading down the home stretch here.
Yes.
Okay. We have no unfinished business. I call to your attention information reports, several of them, in your council packets, and we'll move on to ordinances. Would the city recorder please introduce Ordinance 8.1A for first reading?
Ordinance Bill 2214 relating to the membership of the Planning Commission amending Salem Revised Code Section 6.010.
All right. Counselor Nanki, do you have a motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I would move to advance to second reading for enactment, Ordinance Bill Number 22-14 relating to the Planning Commission members and other items as included in the staff recommended action.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Nanki and seconded by Counselor Benars to move the staff recommendation, the recommended action, as noted in the motion presented in the packet. All those—is there a discussion? All right. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion carries with the exception of a no vote by Counselor Anderson and Counselor Benars.
Bennett.
Bennett.
Benars, you're going to lose him.
I know. All right. Let's see. What was next? A sec, let's see. We have one other first reading. We have several first readings. Would the city recorder please introduce Ordinance 8.1B for first reading?
Ordinance Bill Number 5-15 relating to streetlights, creating a new Chapter 70A and amending Salem Revised Code Sections 70.220, 70.245, 70.250, 70.280, and 70.300.
Thank you. Counselor Nanki, do you have a motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would move for a public hearing on February 23rd on the issue regarding to streetlight fees and other items as included in staff recommendation.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Nanki and seconded by Counselor Lewis to move for the recommended action for the first reading of Ordinance Bill 515, and hold the public hearing on February 23rd, 2015.
And I think there might have been some folks that had questions in and on this.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. I've spoken with Council President Nanki, and also with City Attorney Atchison, and also with the Public Works Director. So I've been around on this one. My concern is with schedule, or Table 1, which is a recommended streetlight fee schedule. And my concern is, when you look at the individual family residences right now, they're being charged a monthly fee of $2.80. And then when you go to the multifamily for the five—all those ones, if you look at, say, the multifamily 5 to 25 units, if it's a 25 unit, that individual resident there will be paying .41 cents. I mean, the way it splits out 25 into 10, 40. And so I'm not so much concerned with the amount of money on the bottom line. I'm concerned with fairness of having a single-family owner pay $2.80, and someone else who might use the streets, who lives in an apartment, effectively paying 40 cents if it's that. So I'm not sure exactly how to do this, but I—what I would like to do is send staff some—I, I have some rough figures in my mind of what I think the monthly fees should be for those higher units. And I'd like to send that to staff, and so they can come up with, you know, here's what we would raise from this, which is, again, not my main concern. My main concern is the fairness to different people in different dwellings.
Okay.
And I, you know, I thought of proposing those figures tonight, but I think it's probably easier to get a staff report, so when we come back for the second reading, we can have some more information on that. The Table 1 could be this, Table 1A could be that, that sort of thing.
So this will be scheduled for a public hearing, so if members of council have questions or comments for staff, you can send those to myself or Lynda or Peter Fernandez, and we can address those.
Okay.
Okay. So are you indicating, then, that a staff report would come back, or that we would simply gain this knowledge in the role of the public hearing?
We can include this as a supplemental staff report.
Okay.
Right, Mayor. Any, any information like Counselor Anderson's suggestion that, that we get ahead of time, we can just incorporate that into the supplemental staff report or into the presentation, so you have the information before you at the public hearing?
Okay. Good. That works?
Works for me.
Send it, send it to me, please.
Okay.
All right. So I've lost my train of thought. We are—
We had the motion that was made and seconded.
The motion has been made and seconded, and that was part of the discussion. Is there any further discussion? Thank you. All right. All those in favor of the question signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right. Our third ordinance is Item C, having to do with Ordinance Bill Number 6-15. Would the recorder please introduce that?
Ordinance Bill Number 615 relating to the use of recreational vehicles outside tourist parks, amending Salem Revised Code Section 30.655.
Thank you. Counselor Nanki, do you have a motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would move that we advance Ordinance Bill Number 6-15 to second reading.
It's been moved by Counselor Nanki and seconded by Counselor McCoy. Was that right?
Yes.
Okay. Is there discussion? All right. No discussion? Call for the motion. All—call for the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right. We'll move on to second readings. 8.2A. Would the recorder please call the roll? Oh, I'm sorry. You need to introduce it first, and then take the ball. Thank you.
Ordinance Bill Number 23-14 relating to the adoption of the new Nen Cesna Neighborhood Plan, a component of the Salem Area Comprehensive Plan, and amending Salem Revised Code Section 64.005. Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor McCoy?
Aye.
Counselor Dickey?
Aye.
Counselor Benjamin?
Here.
No.
All right. Bye, sorry.
Counselor Benars?
Whatever. It is late.
You called my name?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear it. Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Bennett?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
Thank you. And introduce, please, 8.2B, Ordinance Bill 215.
Ordinance Bill Number 215 declaring and proclaiming certain territory located at 4911 and 4922 Swegel Road Northeast, annexed to the City of Salem, prescribing the Salem Area Comprehensive Plan map designation, prescribing East Lancaster Neighborhood Plan map designation, prescribing zoning and withdrawing territory from the Marion County Fire District Number 1. Counselor McCoy?
Aye.
Counselor Dickey?
Aye.
Counselor Benjamin?
Aye.
Counselor Benars?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Bennett?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
Thank you. Please introduce 8.2C for second reading, ordinance bill number 315.
Ordinance Bill Number 315 declaring and proclaiming certain territory located at 1910 and 1930 Wallace Road Northwest annexed to the City of Salem prescribing zoning and withdrawing the territory from the Salem Urban Rural Fire Protection District. Counselor Dickey?
Aye.
Counselor Benjamin?
Aye.
Counselor Benars?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Bennett?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor McCoy?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
Thank you, and item 8.2D, ordinance bill number 4-15.
Ordinance Bill 415 relating to the changing of the composition of the Housing and Urban Development Advisory Commission, amending SRC 20G.010. Counselor Benjamin?
Aye.
Counselor Benars?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Bennett?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor McCoy?
Aye.
Counselor Dickey?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, we're now on to public comment. Has anyone signed up for public comment on item nine? No, all right. New business, I have a mayor's item. You heard earlier this evening testimony regarding the support of the public safety measure, the public safety operating levy that the Polk County Commissioners have placed on the ballot for May 19, May, I think it's May 19 of this year. And I bring that to this city council because I've been keenly aware of the cuts that have been made recently in Polk County for public safety services, cuts required by the reduction in revenue, mostly because of their loss of ONC timber monies and the increase in expenses just simply caused by increases in PERS and insurance and some other costs that the Polk County has had to bear. And I've been to several hearings, I've had several conversations with the sheriff from Polk County and with other elected officials in Polk County, both in the cities of Dallas and Monmouth and Independence, as well as residents from outside those cities, certainly keenly aware of comments made by residents in West Salem. And I would just urge that you join together in supporting public safety operating levy for Polk County. Yes, Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, I'm going to echo that, and I, it's obvious, I've lived in West Salem for 15 years and, you know, when you, when you hear that there are no Polk County police cars or sheriff's cars out and about at certain times of the day, you might think, yeah, they're just, they're just saying that. It's not. They're just saying it. It's true. And the fact that they advertise it, I mean, it's almost motivating to go into the criminal business at certain times of the day in Polk County because there's just nobody out there protecting it. It's crazy. It's absolute crazy. And I think Polk County does as good a job as they possibly can about, about doing their business efficiently. This is a county that is in desperate need of the funds. And as a West Salem resident, I'm going to vote for the ballot measure. I mean, I just think it's crucial. It's hard sell for the folks in West Salem because they're serviced by the City of Salem, but they, they are serviced by the Polk County Services also. And so, I encourage us to be supportive as a, as a council for this ballot measure.
And point of order in this regard, since this motion was not brought in place by Wednesday morning, I think Counselor Bennett would like to make a motion regarding waiving our rules?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, on, do you need a motion on both items that are listed on the additions here for any reason?
No, because the other item is not a motion.
I move the rules be suspended then to allow the mayor to, and the council to act on Polk County Public Safety Operating Levy, item number 10.1A.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Benars to allow the council to waive the rules and be able to vote on the mayor's motion that I'll be presenting. So, right now, we're just voting on the waiving of the rules.
Correct.
Is there further discussion about that? Yes, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you very much. Being a lawyer, I'm kind of process oriented, and so that was my concern when we came here. And I think we had a little discussion earlier in another meeting about setting precedent, so just as a, as a question, does this happen very often?
No.
No, okay. And it's the sort of thing that I would do to another lawyer all the time. Gee, I can't, I'm late on my closing arguments, can you give me a two-week extension? And that's just a matter of professional courtesy. So, from that perspective, I'm going to favor the motion too because it's not a, you know, it's not a, it's a unique situation here, and so I'm happy to, and that's why I asked the commissioner the question about when does he need this. So, I'll vote for it.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to suspend the rules and allow us to vote on my subsequent motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you all very much. So, I move that the Salem City Council support the Polk County Public Safety Levy that will be on the ballot at the May 19-215 election. A successful operating levy will directly benefit the residents and the businesses of Salem and particularly those in West Salem. So, move for the motion. It's been moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Dickey, and all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. I appreciate that, and I know that the residents of Polk County will as well. Thank you. All right, I see no further business to come before...
Madam Mayor?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
We just jumped over the top of the information items and I wanted to...
Oh, did you want to talk about information items?
Counselors, about, more so the resources on the smoke-free ordinance.
Yes, all right.
On the 130 hours. Not knowing, and knowing that previous council is the one that looked at this as well, and there were some concerns regarding enforcement and kind of where we want to go based on staff's previous report regarding either isolation, shelters, or locations. I don't want them to spend a ton of time if we're going to tweak it all around. So, I...
Okay.
What does staff actually plan on doing with that unless Counselor Dickey wants to hit something at first on it?
I actually was just going to ask a question of staff based on what they put in here. So, I was, because the motion that I made back in the fall was to prepare the ordinance, bring it back for a public hearing. So, I was wondering if the section on this table, let me make it bigger because it's late, you can read it, the section on here, would some of that have been done anyway? So, if we weren't doing any public outreach, would there have been some of this already done based on the motion that was approved by council back in the fall?
Mark Bickel Parks and Transportation Services Manager. Yes, Counselor, there's, there's two parts of that work that we would do with any issue that goes before the council, for council consideration. So, preparation of ordinance would occur no matter what the issue was, and then the adoption of the ordinance, again, would be staff time that goes into any issue for consideration. The, the part of the table that deals with public outreach effort, that, that's the part that is, is the effort involved in the public outreach. I summarize the entire table because any new effort that's put before us, that's the entire effort that we do, so.
Okay, does that answer your question?
Answers my question. I don't have an answer. It's Counselor Nanki's question.
Counselor Nanki, does that answer your question?
To some extent. I just have, have issues with the amount of time that it actually shows as far as what staff's doing based on the fact we don't have a really good ordinance. The last thing they brought us had a bunch of questions in it, and so what do we, if they do this, they're going to put this together and then bring us back an ordinance before the public hearing based on the recommendations from the public?
Yes, Counselor, what we would recommend is that we go through this public outreach effort prior to the public hearing, which we would tentatively schedule for April 27. And so, we would, we would conduct the presentations to neighborhood groups and other groups that want us to come speak to them. We would do the, the posting of the signs prior to the hearing, inviting people to the public hearing. We would also, there's, I have there as optional, but we would like to do a Survey Monkey survey to get the, the kind of input that we could gather some more information on people's likes or dislikes. I know we want to talk to, we have some collective bargaining communications we'd like to make, and so there's, there's some research that we'd like to do ahead of time.
So, if I may follow on that then, just knowing that there's several of these properties that we're discussing that are standard employment buildings, the fire stations, shops, and what have you, are we going to ask other groups what they think our employees should be doing on our own property for where they're working, which to me is more of a city manager or a site location supervisor saying, "This is where I want my people to smoke," so that they're not knowing the predominant winds blowing into the building and inside the doors and what have you, and I see that as more of an employment issue from our end versus, I think that the crux of this will be parks. Again, because of the enforcement and the previous decisions that the council made not to move forward with it. So, what are we going to be asking the public about?
Well, Counselor, I think you summarized that correctly. There's really two aspects to this proposed ordinance. One is the parks and the public spaces, and then one is the employment issue with the employees. We don't have public at Garin Island, we don't have public at Willow Lake Treatment Centers. You know, we don't have the public in our reservoirs and pump stations. Those are employee locations. So, there really are two aspects to the ordinance, the, the public spaces and the employment sites.
Before we continue, it's 9:58.
It is. I would move for a five-minute extension.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for a five-minute extension. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Please continue. Where are we with this?
I think you finished up on that end.
All right, so, is there a motion on the floor?
Actually, it was just an information item.
Oh.
So, it would be whether, I mean, if I wanted to make a motion, it'd be, don't do all that research, but then what's that mean on a public hearing? I'm okay with them doing that, I suppose. I don't really like it. It's a lot of time. That being said, the information we get back won't necessarily be statistically representative of the affected parties from the community either, so I hesitate to accept the value of the input we're going to get to some extent, and so that's my quandary.
Okay, Counselor Dickey?
Yeah, I guess...
Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Benars first and then Counselor Dickey.
Thank you. First, an observation and then, and then a question. I've noticed recently at least at my office building right near Chomeka to Business and Industry that we have become, because we have an ashtray outside and a designated smoking area, the designated smoking area for the neighborhood, so we're getting people, office workers from other buildings and other properties. I'm afraid this is going to tell what's going to happen here. But, it was just an observation. I've been watching. Second, I had had, you had $2,000 in materials for this outreach and 130 hours approximately. What are we talking about, the cost of that 130 hours? Because that's really is probably going to be the nut of the whole thing.
Sure, and, and the first thing I want to say is, this is all time that, I mean, this is time that's already budgeted, so it's really how you're allocating time. It's, it's the worth of the time.
So, they're not doing something else that we've asked them to do, basically?
Yeah, so it's really how you're allocating the time, but basically, you're looking at about $6,700 worth of staff time value in that. With the survey, without the survey, it's about $5,000 total staff time. The materials and services, the $1,600 is your, your public hearing notification. That's what goes to the State Department Journal and the other publication, so.
So, close to 9,000 roughly if you do the whole outreach.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Counselor Dickey?
Thanks. A couple things. One, you know, I appreciate that doing a Survey Monkey does not get to a statistically representative sample. I would also say that even when we have public hearings, a lot of times we don't have a statistically representative sample of the people that are affected by whatever decisions we make. So, at least this is another opportunity, another way for us to get some additional information. And, you know, I appreciate the questions too about the cost of the staff time and the other things. I will not go into all the reasons why I made this motion, why I brought this back, but I do want to be out in front of the marijuana issue, and I don't want to have a discussion about that now because it's late, and I know a lot of, I just, I, I think there's a lot of questions around that, but I, this is a really, I think it's really important that we have this discussion because of marijuana and other, other tobacco products that are now on the market. So, that's why I believe that it's worth our time and our effort to bring this issue up again.
Okay, all right, Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And, and on that light, as it, I would like for staff to actually notify the vape retailers that are located in town, because I know that's a large issue and there's a potential for that to be in the hands of minors, and to my knowledge, they won't sell to minors. So, it is nicotine as well. So, it'd be nice to at least get their input if, if we're talking about other devices.
Okay. All right, last but not least, I have one announcement to make, and that is that I am announcing appointments to the council committee on the city manager selection. And as you are all painfully aware, our city manager, Lyndon Norris, has announced her retirement from the City of Salem effective in April 2015. It's important that we move ahead, that we find a new city manager and appoint a new city manager as soon as is practical, and hire that city manager with the expertise, experience, and characteristics that the council needs to lead the city in the future. Therefore, I'm appointing the following counselors, Counselor Bennett, Counselor McCoy, Counselor Nanki, and myself to the city coun, city committee, council committee, I'm sorry, on the city manager selection. And it's outlined in my memo, the charge to the committee, and so you'll, you see that there. I want to assure all of the counselors and...
Point of order. Move to continue for two minutes.
Two minutes, thank you. Two minutes. Is there a motion? Is that a motion for two minutes?
Yeah, we should, otherwise this means nothing because we're not in session.
All right, it, it's been moved and seconded by who? Seconded by Counselor Benjamin to, to extend the meeting for two minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. I just wanted to assure council and staff that this process will be open and that all counselors will be kept up to date. There'll be complete communication and coordination with all counselors as we are moving forward with the search. All right, any questions from counselors? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.